Well, with the brand new MyStop mobile app, it doesn't have to be. With real-time bus arrival passenger notification technology, you can know exactly when the bus will arrive at your stop. No more waiting around. And when it gets there, mobile ticketing through token transit makes boarding quick and painless. The MyStop mobile app and MCAT, helping you on your journey.
Get to your destination with Manatee County Area Transit, where it's easy to ride. MCAT is Manatee County's premier public transportation provider. With easy-to-follow routes and schedules, MCAT will get you where you need to go safely and efficiently. All MCAT buses and trolleys are handicapped accessible. Visit www.mcat.org for routes, schedules, and video tutorials on how to ride MCAT. Manatee County Area Transit, where it's easy to ride.
All right, we're gonna call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission for March 9th, 2023 to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right. First thing, Ms. Lydard, do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Good morning. Advertizing public hearings. Item number two, PA 2212, ordinance 2326, Cone Ranch Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. There is a revised ordinance in straight through underline format to correct typographical errors attached to the memo. Item number three, PDR 1603, PR South Point, foreman known as Borbeck Mokasongwalla, the Borbeck family limited partnership, and his revised site plan attached to memo, corrections to typographical errors in staff report to change side yard seat back on single-family detached from six to five feet. PDR 2215G, Bay Drive Town Homes Blue Side Up LLC, and his airport review letter attached to the memo. PDR number, item number five, PDR 2231P, Duncan Jubilee Neil Signature Homes LLC, and his airport review letter and neighborhood meeting summary attached to the memo. Item number seven, PDC 2124, CP Park It, Premium Outdoor Storage, Blue Iwana Investment Group, and his a public comment attached to the memo. PDR 2201CP, Ry Road Residential 16 Drive Associated LLC, public comment attached to the memo. And item number 12, PA 1217, ordinance 2322 and ordinance 2326 to 2347, Community Rating System Class IV, County Initiated Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, revised motions in straight through underline format.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Schenk, is there anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a pretty busy agenda, so we're gonna try to move through as efficiently as possible. We have a couple items on the agenda that are presentations upon request. We'll work through those. And I, there are conflicts of interest where I'll have to excuse myself and turn over the chairmanship to Mr. Smock on a couple of these. So we'll, we'll be changing it up a little bit here as we go through. So the first item, item number one, again, it's a presentation upon request. It's a county-initiated comprehensive plan. Ms. Lydard, can you please read that into the record? And then we'll introduce it very briefly and open it up for discussion.
Item number one, PA 2304, ordinance 2329, County Initiated Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Community Plans is a legislative case. Mr. Charles Andrews, principal planner, is the case manager. And it's amended the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan provided for county-initiated text amendment to element two, future land use, objective 2.9.3, to update the list of adopted community plans, amending provisions of the comprehensive plan.
Very good, thank you. And where's Mr. Charles? Yes, sir. If you would, just briefly introduce it, then we'll open it up for public comment. And if there's any specific information or questions required, then we'll focus on that. So just very briefly, please. Yes. For some reason, I get the idea technology's gonna be an issue today.
There we go, okay. Hi, good morning, Charles Andrews with staff here. So good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This is just a, as you said, a comp plan text amendment. A request to update the list of currently adopted community plans for the county. And it's just nothing more than a cleanup and an update. So I do have a presentation upon request, if you'd like that.
Thank you very much. So what we're gonna do is open it up for public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this specific application, please do so now. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion. Ask the Commissioners, is there any additional information necessary for this application? Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and Chair will consider a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to recommend transmittal of plan amendment, PA 2304, ordinance number 2329.
Very good, we have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Roth, second. Any discussion or deliberation? All right, Chair's gonna call the matter of vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes. I'm sorry, we have to do this digitally now, so. So we have a, oops. Again, I apologize. We have a new system we're trying to use, and it's the first time. So this is the first application we've moved, we've actually done. So we have a motion. Mr. Roth, you second it. I believe for IT, I think. Okay, very good. All right, so let's go ahead and vote on this, so. All right, all right, with that, I think we have the vote in. And again, motion passes four zero. All, all those present voted affirmative. All right, and let the record show, Mr. Turner joined. I'm sure Mr. Turner dealt with traffic this morning. So, all right, with that, we're gonna go to item number two. And again, I apologize, it's a new system we're working through. But item number two, Ms. Lydard, can you please read item number two into the record?
Item number two, PA 2212, ordinance 2326, foreman known as 2284, Cone Ranch Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment is a legislative case, and Mr. Bilochay, principal planner, is the case manager. It's amending the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan provided for a privately initiated large-scale map amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element to designate a specific real property generally located in the north sides of State Road 64 is, east of King Road and west of Corbert John Road at King Road Parish, Manatee County, from ag rural, agricultural rural future land use classification, 112 acres to US3 urban fringe future land use classification to be developed in accordance with policy 2.1.2.8 of the comprehensive plan as a component of a large project located west of the future development area boundary.
Thank you. Who do we have for the applicant? Good morning. If you could, please state your name and county of residence.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Kyle Grimes, Attorney at Law for Grimes Galvano here in Manti County.
Thank you very much. And if you would, just please briefly introduce your application.
Yes. So this is an application for comprehensive plan amendment, map amendment, from AGR to UF3. This is, and if I could have the overhead, I'll just give a brief so you can see kind of what we're talking about here. This is for a portion of the property that is the Cone Ranch Plan Development Project. It was a plan development mixed-use project approved back originally in 2009. And when it was approved, there was a small section of it, about 112 acres, that for whatever reason, when the F-DAB line was drawn, was bisected and created two future land use categories across the property, primarily UF3, but a small segment that was AGR. And it kind of created this little enclave of AGR in there. And rather than get into the location of the F-DAB line, we were pursuing an amendment of that area to UF3, really just to provide consistency across the project with regard to regulations and what can be built in that area. We're pursuing a amendment to that Cone Ranch zoning ordinance right now. And so we're really just looking for consistency across the project boundary. So, you know, I'm happy to go into a little more detail if you'd like, but it's really more of a cleanup item.
Very good, thank you. What we'll do is we'll open it up for public comment, see if there's any specific information necessary for this application. So with that, again, I'd like to open it up for public comment. So is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll ask the Commissioners, is there any additional information necessary for this application? Mr. Roth?
So the, the change from AGR to UF3 would allow for an increase of around 300 units. However, the rezone we have going through, we're at a density about, I think it's about 1.7. So this really isn't to get additional density. It's more for making it clear that the regulations across the entirety of the property are consistent. So we're not getting into different lot sizes in different areas or things like that. So it's, it's less about increasing the density and more about having consistent regulations across the property. It's 112. And of, of this portion that we're requesting the amendment, the total project acreage is 1,174. I think we're pursuing 2,080. Sorry. 2,048. 2,048 units across the entire property. We're about 1.74, right? 1.74.
All right, thank you. Any, any additional questions for the applicant? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and the Chair will entertain a motion. Let's use our new toy here, please.
So. I had a question for staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. With that, for the record, we're opening up the public hearing again. So question for staff.
Sorry. Just in staff's opinion, was the F-DAB line not drawn correctly for this? Was this an error or?
I believe it was drawn correctly back at the, at the time that it was established. But we do have a policy in place that does allow for development east of the F-DAB, and this piece will have to be developed in accordance with that policy. That sets the parameters for how you can develop east of the F-DAB.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead. And Mr. Grimes, before we close the public hearing, do you have a rebuttal? Okay, all right. With that, we're gonna close the public hearing. And again, the Chair will entertain a motion or open it up for discussion or deliberation.
Make a motion.
Okay. I don't know. I know, we'll just do it. I think they said they were having some technical difficulty, so we'll just go ahead. So we have a, Mr. Smock is making a motion. Do we have a second?
Can you say with the motion?
Oh.
Or motion transmit?
Motion transmit.
Recommendation transmit.
As recommended, okay. All right, we have a motion to transmit by Mr. Smock and a second by Mr. Roth. Any discussion or deliberation? All right, we're gonna call the matter of vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, item number three. Ms. Lydard, can you please read item number three into the record?
Yes. PDR 1603, PR South Point, foreman known as Borbeck Mokasongwalla, the Borbeck family limited partnership. And it's a quasi-judicial case. And Mr., Ms. Doro Turani, principal planner, is the case manager. And the proposal is to approve and amend it to zoning ordinance, PDR 1603 CP, to amend the preliminary site plan on a PDR zoning district for 524 single-family residential units. The project is at more or less 136.95 acres, located south of Mokasongwalla Road and north of Amlong Road, and commonly known 4105 Mokasongwalla Road, Palmetto, Manatee County. And from the applicant, I think it's Mr. Kuffel.
Very good. And as this application is quasi-judicial, we're gonna ask anybody who has a desire to speak on this application or any other legislative act, I'm sorry, quasi-judicial application, to please rise to be sworn in. If you have a desire to speak and you're not sworn in now, and the application's a quasi-judicial, you'll have to be sworn in, sworn in before you speak. So in an abundance of caution, if you intend to speak, please, please be sworn in.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you are about to make to the Planning Commission are truthful and accurate? I do. Thank you. When you step to the podium, state your name, county of residence, and you have been sworn.
Thank you very much. All right, morning, Mr. Grimes. If you could, please, again, this is a presentation upon request. We do have a, a public speaker requested to speak. So if you could.
Who I have spoken with, by the way.
Okay.
Caleb Grimes with Grimes Galvano. I have been sworn. I'm here representing the applicant in my homes. And what I, and Clint Cuffel is here if we have a question for him. But I just, very, very briefly, want to make sure everybody understands this is not a rezone. It has a current zoning, PDR has an approval of 720 multifamily units, and we are changing it to 524 single-family units. And so it would normally be a down zone. And often, we wouldn't even have to come here from this, but because of a couple of design changes, we have to come back to the board. Be glad to answer any questions, but it's, it's taking it down. And I have spoken to the, I think it's the same one that has written up and have answered her questions.
Very good. Maybe just very briefly, you mentioned design changes. Is it, are the design changes causing the need for the?
As, as you know, there are a couple of things that can cause it. If you look at the, on it, our access is all to Mokasongwalla Road. And we have added an access that goes through the neighbor to the east and up to Mokasongwalla Road. Change access, you have to come back. And if you change within, I think it's 200 feet of the property line, and we change to the single-family homes within 200 feet of the property line. So that's what makes you come back. Otherwise, you go from multifamily to single-family. We, it's administrative.
Very good, thank you. All right, with that, any, I'm sorry, any questions for the applicant? Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and go to the public speakers. The, the speaker I have on the list is Carol Huttinger.
He answered all my questions.
Very good. Ms. Huttinger is waiving her opportunity to speak, so thank you. But with that, I'll also open it up to anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application. If there's anybody else who wishes to come forward and make a comment or a statement or ask a question, please do so. Okay, seeing no one come, you have to come up, sir, yeah. And again, this is a quasi-judicial, so you have to be sworn. So if you could, please state your name, your county of residence, and that you have been sworn.
I've been sworn. Name is Raymond Stabe, Manatee County. My property backs up this development they're looking to put in. Just a couple of questions on the 92nd Street East entrance to our, to the community I'm in now. Is that going to be an open entrance for increased traffic going by the grammar school? Or is the Mokasongwalla gonna be the main entrance?
Okay.
Couple more would be the stream that runs the, the east barrier of that property. I don't know if that's gonna remain a stream. It does feed a cabbage sloth, which does feed a recreational kayaking area down in what they call Frog Creek. I just wanna see what, what the plans are with that, if there is a buffer. I have one of the few properties that goes right up to this property here. I like to change to single-family, but those are my main two questions on the, the entrance of 96, on 92nd Street East. And if there is gonna be any trash collection area, where would that be?
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And I know there's probably a lot of people here who aren't frequent flyers at these types of meetings. So the general process, as you come up, you, you make statements or ask questions. The applicant has the obligation to respond to those when appropriate, or staff may provide additional information. So there won't be an interaction or dialogue. It's an opportunity to state a question and then, and discussion or rebuttal, the applicants can address that. Also, you have the opportunity, you see the folks in person. You can actually catch them and have discussions separate and apart from the hearing. So with that, I'll ask, is there anybody else who has any questions related to the application? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if, any questions from the planning commissioners? I have a question. Mr. Cuffel, if you could. I think those were two fairly simple questions. If you could, please speak to those.
Okay, good, good morning. Clint Cuffel with WRA Engineering, and I'm a Hillsborough County resident. If you can show the overhead, a couple of questions that he had. Our, our secondary access is off of 92nd, which is a stubbed road from Woods and Mokasongwalla. It will be a gated access. We would consider it probably our secondary access because we do have a full, or actually, right now, it's gonna be a ride-in, ride-out on Mokasongwalla Road up here because of the four-laning of Mokasongwalla. That, that is currently under construction. So they did restrict our access to ride-in, ride-out. But we do have a stubbed public road, 92nd Street, that we're tying in as our second access. It will be gated.
Okay, it, it's gated for resident use only?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, or emergency services, of course?
Yeah.
Okay.
The second question, Cabbage Slough is down here in the bottom southeast corner of our project. We actually have a, about a 10-plus acre conservation easement that you see there in green that all backs up the Cabbage Slough. So it'll be a nice buffer along. That conservation easement actually already exists, so we're not proposing to modify that. We do have a fairly large buffer all along the east side of our project that will buffer the existing single-family homes from Woods and Mokasongwalla to the east.
I'm sorry, how big is the buffer? I'm sorry, how big is the buffer?
It ranges from like 20 to 25 feet.
And it's a planted, vegetated buffer?
It's actually a fairly large drainage ditch right now, and then we buffer off of the drainage ditch.
Okay, so the ditch is gonna remain, and then a buffer on, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
And then trash collection is a standard residential trash collection.
Where every, every neighbor has their own can and moves it in and out?
That's correct. There will be a amenity center up front, I'm sure I'll have a little different setup, but standard trash collection.
But very similar to the neighbors' operation, I'm sure?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, is there any additional information necessary from the applicant with regard to this application? And so, seems fairly straightforward, equivalent to downzoning, so with that, we'll close, I'm sorry, Mr. Grimes, do you have any rebuttal? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public, public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything on? I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County zoning ordinance number PDR 1603 PR, approval of an amendment to the preliminary site plan with stipulations A1 through A5, B1, C1 through C5, and D1 through D6, adoption of findings for specific approval and granting specific approval for alternative to land development code sections 401, 3E8 to allow a reduction to the rear yard setback when adjacent to active agricultural uses and 402 7D7 to allow a reduction to secondary front yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet.
Very good, we have a motion by Ms. Kibo, second by Mr. Roth. Any additional discussion or deliberation? All right, chair's gonna call the matter to vote. So if you could, please vote.
Oops. What happened?
Does everybody have it come up?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna call a voice vote, just, just to, just to move it along, yeah, so with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes five, zero. So, I think we're up to item number four, again, it's a quasi judicial application, so Ms. Lider, can you please read item number four into the record?
Item number four, PDR 2215G, Bay Drive Town Homes Blue Site Up LLC, and is a quasi judicial case, and Ms. Laura Gonzalez, planner two, is the case manager, and the proposal is for approval of a general development plan for the development of eight multifamily units, two units are already built on more or less 1.33, 1.39 acre zoning PDR coastal high hazard, and is located 0.63 miles west of US 41 on the south-south of Bay Drive, Bradenton, Manatee County.
Thank you. And for the applicant, Ms.
Mitch?
Thank you, Ms. Rosina, good morning, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, like the previous application, this is a, not a rezone, this is an amendment to a, I'm sorry, yeah, I should know that, my name is Bob Schmidt, I'm a local certified planner, and I have been sworn. As I started to say, this is a, not a rezone, but this is an amendment to a preliminary site plan, a PDR from 1996 that had expired for four townhomes on this parcel west of US 41 on Bay Drive, I just took this from the staff report to be simple, here's US 41, here's Bay Drive here, if some of you are familiar with the Anna Maria Oyster Bar, that is where Bay Drive is on US 41, south by the airport, you take a right if you're headed south, and you go down to the end, and there is this parcel here that currently contains one duplex, or for lack of a better term, a villa, with two units, and this, on this parcel is, this, this proposal is to build three more units similar to this, I do have elevations, the density is 5.75 units per acre in a rez-6 future landies category, it's a project that we believe is consistent with the surrounding area, it's an infill project in West Bradenton, not that there's any benefit for being in the southwest tiff, but it is there, and it's essentially a build-out of a project that never got completed, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and as I said, I do have elevations and things that I can show, and what I'd like to do is just respond, if I need to, with any public comment, I can show those to you if you'd like.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Roth?
What did you say the elevation was?
Well, the elevation that I was referring to was a picture of the building, as in, an elevation showing the building. Mr. John Cavoli is our engineer, he is here, and if you, if you would like to know what the base flood elevation is?
Let me ask the question again.
Sure.
I'm looking at a letter from the airport that says the maximum allowed elevation at the site is 175 feet before impacting whatever the park surfaces are. It's one and a half miles from the runway threshold, but only 1,000 feet from the extended runway, where the arriving aircraft flight and altitude are between 200 and 250 feet. What, how big are the, how high is it gonna be?
They're, they're no higher than 40 feet, probably less than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any additional questions for the applicant? I would not call that elevation, I would call that height.
Thank you.
Good definition.
Yeah, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, I have one speaker card, Dr. Donald Fisher, if you would, yes, sir, if you would, please come forward, state your name, your county of residence, and that you have been sworn.
I'm Dr. Donald C. Fisher.
Oh, time's up.
I have been sworn, and I'm a Manatee County resident.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, my concern with the proposed project is originally, in 1996, Mr. Weaver, who has passed, had to come before this board to get approval to make it a two-b buildings, a four-unit condominium complex. Right now, what's being proposed is over-doubling the density in that area, also, there was required at that time that a small retention pond be placed between the road and the building for runoff. What is being proposed would be to remove that retention pond, resulting in all the runoff going into Sarasota Bay. My other concern is, are these going to be owner-occupied townhomes or condominiums? Because presently, they're being used as Airbnbs and not being owner-occupied. Those are the majority of my concerns as far as what's being proposed. What has been done to the property in the last two years is that a wall was built between the property and the drainage ditch in Bay Drive, that wall is measuring over eight and a half feet, and my understanding is that you need a variance to go over six feet tall with a concrete wall, and I was wondering if anyone could ask if there was a variance ever approved? So.
All right, is that, is that the, the majority of your concerns and questions?
Yes.
Okay, and again, well, the applicant and the engineer, the applicant's engineers are taking note of the questions, and will have an opportunity to speak to some of those points directly in a, in the follow-up discussion. So, that was the only speaker card I had, but is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak, you have to, you don't have to be selected, you can just come forward. And again, if you could, state your name, your county of residence, and that you have been sworn, those are the. Good morning.
Good morning, folks. I apologize for not having, better, being better prepared, because the notice of this hearing was sent to my New York residence, and it just got, arrived three days ago, so I'll just express a couple of my concerns in addition to the ones that you've heard.
Yes, sir, if you could, just state your name, your county of residence, and that you have been sworn for the record.
Right, it's Robert Eustace, and I live directly across from this proposed project on Bay Drive, and I've owned that property for a number of years, I've, I've been vacationing in that area when it was still a, oh.
And have you been sworn?
No, I haven't.
Okay, all right, that's what we're getting to, so again, if, if there's anybody in here who thinks they might wanna speak on an application, it would be a good idea to be sworn now, or you're gonna have to do it before you get an opportunity to make a statement, so.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you are about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, so.
Well, I have been a resident, a rental resident before this property was developed at all, when it was a shack in a wild Florida area, and since then, I have purchased the property directly across from the wall of this property that's being developed, and in addition to the concerns I've already heard, I have a concern about how this greatly expanded project will affect the, the natural history, or the natural state of that area. I have seen bald eagles and osprey building their nests, and these 50 to 75-foot pine trees, there are probably about 50 to 60 trees that were required when this original two, two-unit building was established there, and I know it's all residential on Bay Drive and on both sides of the street, and this is going to be drastically changing a certain, an important part of this natural current environment, and so I would like you to consider that aspect, there are, other than, there are birds, there are snowy egrets, there are ibises that frequent that area, and that would all be gone if this project is approved. I'd be happy if I have more time to put my words and thoughts down in, in writing, but as I said, I wasn't able to do that because of the quick notice that finally reached me here in trailer, in on Bay Drive, which is my winter seasonal residence, I'm a resident of New York State and Florida.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, this, the planning commission is a recommending board, we, we vet information, our applications, and we, our, our vote is a recommendation, it goes to the Board of County Commissioners, you'll have an additional opportunity to speak to the application when it goes to the Board of County Commissioners, and they, they are the ones who approve or deny the application, so you will have another opportunity to compile your thoughts and present them to the Board of County Commissioners, so, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the application? Again, please come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn. I'm sorry, and the county of residence, so. Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Paracta, 2323 Pennsylvania Avenue, Manatee resident.
And you've been sworn?
Okay.
Have you been sworn?
No, I have not, I have not.
Okay, all right, again, if you intend to speak, you have to be sworn in, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Hey. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations you are about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My main concern, I, I have been a trailer estate resident for 34 years, have watched it, the road that they're proposing this on, Bay Drive, is a very, very narrow, small road, the park has been there 60 years, and it's been used all that time, people walk it, people are on carts, when, when people don't know this area, they don't respect the quote 25 mile an hour things, they're zooming in and out here, our concern is with the volume that they're talking, and this is coincidentally, a very delicate piece of land right on the corner of the bay, there are mangroves, it's been a long, long protected area, the, the main reason for this is the danger, can they guarantee us that we are safe on our road to use that road? People come in there for a weekend, they don't know the park is there, they're, you know, they're zooming out to get their goodies and all of that, and I have seen it, and I'm sure the people that, that live there have seen it, it's, it is a dangerous thing. We would not oppose another building, three of them, I guess I'd like to know if there also was an environmental impact statement on this, because, because of the area that it sits on that bay, it, it, it should be, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and maybe address a couple of the, the specific questions or concerns brought up by the neighbors. Mr. Cavoli, could I please have you come up to the podium, please? I'm sorry, state your name and that you've been sworn, and your county of residence?
John Cavoli, Cavoli Engineering, Sarasota County resident, and I have been sworn.
Thank you. One of the concerns that was raised by the neighbor, neighbor was related to stormwater, can you speak what the intent with this application, or what the process it'll go through to provide the, the stormwater necessary to meet the rules and regulations?
Correct, with the development, we are required to provide a stormwater management system for the site, for the proposed development, there is no stormwater management system that currently exists on the site, so water quality will be improved, it's a direct discharge to the bay, so we have to provide 150% of the required treatment, there is no attenuation requirement, and we have to meet all Manatee County, Southwest Florida Water Management District codes and regulations.
Okay, and maybe to, put it in layman's terms, when we talk about the attenuation, because it's a direct discharge into the bay, that means you don't have to hold the water and meter it out as if it were inland, and, you know, your direct discharge, unintenu, unintenuated flow would maybe flood a neighbor, the neighbor is the bay in this case, is that correct?
Correct, the fish won't mind getting more water.
Yeah, and the, the other component of it is the treatment, you mentioned 150%, so the, can you please describe what the intent is with regard to providing that 50% more treatment?
Correct, right now, when it rains, water direct, runs off the site, takes any pollutants that are on the site and throws them right into the bay, by providing a stormwater management system, you're required to provide on a normal project, the first one inch of runoff, so that is treated before it is discharged to the bay, in this particular case, because it's direct discharge, we have to provide an inch and a half of the first rain that falls on the site, so you're improving the water quality coming off of this site by the first one and a half inches of runoff.
And that, that extra treatment, is that a requirement for outstanding waters, Florida outstanding waters, or the Water Management District, Manatee County, what's the, the impetus of the additional treatment?
It's, it's just all the codes, if you have a direct discharge to an outstanding Florida water body, which this is, you have to provide that additional treatment.
Right, so it, it acknowledges that it's discharging to the bay and ask for the additional treatment, okay?
Correct.
And then, the other ques... maybe you can speak to this. With regard to the environmental considerations, generally speaking, there may be some information that's provided during this process. But generally, what is the process with regard to the analysis or the considerations related to environmental impacts with any project?
With any project, you're required to provide an environmental report that identifies any listed species, habitat, anything else that's on the site. This particular project, a certain portion of the shoreline is improved or it has riprap. The other portion is mangroves. We are providing a 30-foot buffer around the entire waterfront area. So, that's additional protection to the existing conditions. And again, we have to meet all the codes and regulations with regard to the environmental habitat.
And who are the agencies that review the environmental information?
Manatee County, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and possibly DEP will be forwarded the application from SWF MUD.
And I believe there was some mention of manatees. I don't know that this would... this project would impact manatees. But generally speaking, if there are habit listed species concerns, who reviews those concerns?
Manatee County and Southwest Florida Water Management District.
And the Southwest Florida Water Management District, do they do that in coordination with the Florida Wildlife Commission?
Yes. They forward our application whenever we submit something to those other agencies just for additional coordination.
Okay. All right. And then, the other... one of the other questions I had, and I had some information I saw, there's a specific request, I believe, related to a wall height?
We're going to have to recheck that. According to the surveyor, that wall is existing, and it's listed as six-foot high. If it's taller, we have to go get that checked. But we'll address that when we go in for final site plan approval.
And the final site plan is when, if by chance, there's some deviation or some issue identified, it would have to be corrected during construction, and that process will identify that?
Yes. We have to meet the codes or ask for some waiver from the code. But we have no intention of asking for any of those waivers.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Roth, please.
Is there in fact an environmental study that's not...
An environmental study that is not included in this report?
We are going to have to submit a full environmental study during the final site plan approval process, yes.
Okay. So, let me ask a direct question.
Yes.
Are there any environmental species, as spoken by a resident of the area, that says there are bald eagles? I mean, do we...
Not on this piece of property, no.
Scrub jays?
Not on this piece of property.
I'm good. Thank you.
And that's a result of an analysis or investigation that was performed?
That was a preliminary observation taken on the site. The formal report has not been done yet.
Right. And through the final site plan, construction plan process, that has to be done again, correct?
Correct. Yes.
And it's done in coordination with the review agencies that we discussed previously, correct?
Correct. And in addition to that, if the final site plan was to sit for a period of time, the majority of the time, we're asked to do another environmental assessment prior to the start of construction. So, it's all about timing.
Yeah. So, it's done multiple times in the process. With this being an entitlement process, it's a... It doesn't necessarily end here. It's just... it's the beginning of the process. So, it's a preliminary analysis. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And the only other question that I had was related to density. So, Mr. Schmidt, could you please speak to density? And just again, I know there's a lot of people here who aren't normally part of these processes. This is like a trial. There's testimony given, compelling testimony. And you have to speak on the record if you have information that you would like to get on the record. Again, there's going to be a Board of County Commission meeting, and you'll have an opportunity to include that at that time. So, we can't break the process or it violates state statute. So, I'm sorry. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The density is... this is a res six future land use category, so we can go up to six units per acre. We're at 5.75, so we're below that threshold. When the project was approved in '96, as some of you may remember, it was a policy of the county commission at that time to kind of say, "Well, let's give you half of what you're entitled to." It's not that way anymore, and I think even the attorneys, whether it's the county attorney or other attorneys have argued, if it's res four, then make it res four, and four units per acre is all you can get. This is res six. We have 1.39 acres. We're entitled to go up to eight units, and it will stay below the six units per acre, as I mentioned. I just wanted to put this up here. This will be a very... Dr. Fisher asked a question that I need to confirm with my client. He is out, had knee replacement surgery yesterday. And I will confirm with him on the issue of it being a rental or ownership. But I believe that this is going to be... it's a recorded condominium, and I believe these will be owner-occupied units. I just want to confirm that with my client, who couldn't be here today. Other than that, I think Mr. Cavoli answered the other questions, and if there's anything else that... Oh, traffic. Eight units doesn't generate enough traffic to make any mandatory improvements at Bay Drive. I don't foresee much of, if any, of this traffic going north through Trailer Estates. Trailer Estates has a res 16 future land use category. This site is res six. So, I don't think we're going to be putting enough cars on the road to trip up any improvements. And there was no traffic study required. This is not a rezone. But we will have to do a traffic analysis with the final site plan.
And for clarification, we're not increasing the density. The density is a right granted through the process.
Through the comprehensive plan.
Through the comprehensive plan. The... I think a more appropriate characterization is the previous plan didn't maximize the density that was allowed by rule. Is that...
That is 100% correct.
Okay. All right. So, it's not really an increase in density. It's... The proposed plan is more units.
That's exactly... and the fact that the previous plan had expired, which required us to go back through this process again.
Okay. All right. And I don't know. I don't know if the county attorney's office has an opinion. But I think, isn't there state statute related to the rental component?
Yeah, I was going to pipe in on that. The county cannot regulate duration of rentals. So, whether it's owner-occupied or not is in fact the planning commission board can consider. I do want to ask, are the elevations you're showing now binding or just for illustration purposes?
I can't speak to that. I would say illustration purposes only. But I can tell you that the location of the property being on Sarasota Bay, it's going to be very, very tastefully done. They do have an architect, Bill Taglin, that's worked on this. He's done a couple of elevations. This was the most recent one that we saw.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Okay. Mr. Schmidt, do you have any closing comments or rebuttal?
No. We'll be happy to talk to the neighbors out in the hall if they have any other questions.
Okay. All right. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or deliberation or a motion. Forgot that option.
I'll make a motion, so I gotta... Okay. I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County Zoning Ordinance Number PDR 2215G and approval of a general development plan with stipulations A1 through A6, B1 through B2, C1, D1 through D5, and E1 through E2. Adoption of findings for specific approval and granting specific approval for an alternative to Land Development Code Section 401-5A2. Building height compatibility to allow a six-foot-high fence to be placed along the property line.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Who seconded that?
Mr. Smock.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Kebba and a second by Mr. Smock. Any additional discussion or deliberation? Okay. Chair is going to call the matter to vote, so please vote. All right. With that, I'm gonna... yeah. With that, I'm gonna do a voice... I'm not seeing anything come up, so we'll do a voice call. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right. We're moving on to item number five. And I have a conflict of interest on both items number five and item number six, so I'm going to step away from the dais. And Mr. Smock is going to take the gavel. Thank you.
Could we have these items right on the record, please?
Yes. Item number five, PDR 2231P, Duncan Joe Villay, Neil Signature Homes LLC, and it's a quasi-judicial case, and Ms. Emmeline Potts, Planner One, is the case manager. And the proposal is for approval, a preliminary site plan for a 29-lot, single-family detached subdivision, currently son PDR Plan Development Residential and PDR Coastal High Hazard. The property is more or less 29.50 acres and is generally located north of Palmasola South Loop Road and more or less 660 feet east of 99th Street Northwest and commonly known 94009 Avenue Northwest, Bradenton, Manatee County.
Excellent. Now, this is quasi-judicial, so has there been any ex parte communications by anybody?
No.
Excellent. And then, introduction.
Sure. Kara Kaneg, Planner with ZNS Engineering, representing Neil Communities. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. So, this project before you today is also not a rezone. It is a proposed new preliminary site plan located in northwest Bradenton, off 9th Street Northwest, also known as Palmasola Loop Road. So, the proposed project is called Tide Line. The future land use category is res one with a zoning district of planned development residential. So, that is the existing future land use category and zoning of the site, and it is not proposed to be changed. The project to the north is Tides End. To the east is Hawthorne Park. And it is proposing 29 units on 29 and a half acres. There previously was a preliminary site plan that was approved in 2007 by a different developer. And because it was a preliminary site plan, that expired in 2012. So, all this application is, is for a new preliminary site plan for the site on behalf of Neil Communities, proposing a 29-single-family detached subdivision on 29 and a half acres. The density allowed on the site is one dwelling unit per gross acre, and the proposal is .98 dwelling units per gross acre. We meet all the required landscape buffers, 15-foot green belts, 20-foot roadway. We're providing more than the required open space. 35% is required. We're proposing 48%. And we're consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. We have representatives here from ZNS Engineering for engineering questions, from Neil Communities, and then also Ed Vogler for any land use questions. So, with that, if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions this time?
No.
Excellent. And...
Thank you.
Let's go to the...
Staff.
Staff reports or staff presentations?
Well, does staff have anything to add?
Presentation for staff is presentation scheduled open request.
Anybody? I think it's pretty clear. Okay. I'm going to go straight to public comments on this one, then. If any... anybody in the public would like to speak on this issue? Going once? Come on. Just state your name.
Brian Gillen, Manatee County, and I unfortunately have not been sworn in.
Is there anyone else present who's sworn?
Anybody that's thinking about maybe, possibly?
If you have any intention...
It doesn't hurt.
Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations you are about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was just interested to find out the... although I understand that the 29 homes or beyond 29 acres, what the minimum size of each lot might be. I did see a preliminary drawing, and I think one was, or a couple of the lots were about 50 by 100. And that is, you know, considerably less than one acre. The other question would be, is it possible to make each of the homes a single-story home versus two-story homes? And that would be in keeping with the neighbors... adjoining neighborhoods, which would be Tides End and Hawthorne Park. Thank you.
Thank you. So, to answer the gentleman's questions, the minimum lot size, square footage that's proposed, although the minimum shown on the site plan is 50 by 120 feet, the actual minimum on what is proposed for lot size is 13,500 square feet, which is around .31 acres. The way that Manatee County calculates density is gross density, so you take the entire acreage of the site, and that's why it's not 29 units, like one unit per acre in relation to what he was speaking to. And then, in relation to the zoning, the maximum height allowed is two stories. The client, you know, has the option to do two stories, but it is unknown at this time yet what the product type will be. But there's only a maximum of two stories allowed on the site.
All right. Thank you. And again, understanding when they're developing lot sizes, we've got roads to put in, easements, greenways, all sorts of fun stuff. So, it does cut down on the actual size of lots. And then, one unit per acre is just a clarification of how many houses can actually sit on that parcel, not how large the lots are going to be. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Do you have any rebuttal besides that? Any more staff comments? Then I will open up for discussion or...
We have to say closed public hearing.
Closed public hearing. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll write that one down.
Deliberation.
Open up for deliberation, or I will also entertain...
I have a question. When... they're talking about, when must they propose the final, whether it's going to be two stories or one story? Does that come up at the final hearing of the commissioners, the county commissioners?
Well, the staff can answer that. Normally, final site plan, construction plans, when they design the homes.
I guess my question... let me try it again.
It's only preliminary site plan. It doesn't require construction drawings. The staff can answer it in more detail if you want.
Can the staff answer that for me?
The project market and the site plan, that's going to be two stories. And the applicant has pointed that before. They're going to be two stories.
It's going to be two stories?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'm the only one who has it written out. Okay. I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County's Zoning Ordinance Number PDR 2231P, approval of the preliminary site plan with stipulations A1 through A5, B1 through B5, C1 through C4, and D1 through D2. Adoption of findings for specific approval and granting specific approval for an alternative to Land Development Code Section 401-3E8, reducing the required agricultural setback on the west property line from 35 feet to 30 feet.
I've got a second.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Chair votes aye, so passes 4 to 0 with Phil Chanley.
Abstaining.
Abstaining. All right. Thank you. And because our computer system is not letting us pass 4, we're not going to put it in the system like we're supposed to. And we're going to move on to the next issue, which Bill also has to abstain from. If we can go ahead and read this one into...
We're ready for next one.
Ready for six.
Item number six, PDR 1909PR, right crossing, here preliminary site plan amendment, Forest Stars USA. Forest Stars USA's Real Estate Group, INC. owner, and it's a quasi judicial case, and Mr. Marshall Robinson, Principal Planner, is the case manager. And it's amended and reestating zoning ordinance number PDR 1909CP, approving the following changes to the preliminary site plan, adding 140 foot, reducing width right away, providing connectivity and cross access adjacent to the parcel to the south of the property, to modify all internal road ways from public to private road ways in accordance with Land Development Code requirements, three, reducing the overall number of residential lots from 118 to 116, and four, removing the buffer planting required for the north central overlay district, and providing plantings according with the LDC requirements.
Thank you.
The site, as is previously stated, is on PDR Plan Development Residential and within the US3 Urban Fringe Future Land Use category, and is more or less 39.65 acres, located 0.25 miles north of Upper Manatee River Road, having frontage along the east side of Rye Road North, and with the following address, 1234 North Rye Ranch, Paris, Manatee County.
Thank you. Have there been any ex parte communications?
None.
All right, then we're ready for the applicant presentation.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Ria Lopez with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm a resident of Pasco County, and I have been sworn. Could I pull up my presentation? The PDF works. All right. So, today we have before you an amendment to the Hirsch, which was formerly called Rye Crossing Preliminary Site Plan. Here with me today, we have a representative from the applicant and developer Forest Star, we have Mr. John Barnard. We also have our project engineer, Mr. Dan Bond with BGE, and we also have Lindsay Craig with RVI Planning, and we're the land use planners for the project. So, Hirsch, the project, is located on Rye Road. As you can see, the site is roughly 40 acres in size. It is accessed from Rye Road, which is to the west of the property. The property was approved for plan development zoning in 2019, and is currently under construction. It is within the Urban Fringe III Future Land Use District. The request we have before you today has three changes proposed to the preliminary site plan. The first change is to add an additional access point to the south. This is to provide interconnection to the Rutland Plan Development, which is to the south of the property, and is being developed by the same developer Forest Star, who also owns the Rutland Plan Development. So, that is the area that is circled in orange. Next, we are also modifying all streets within the project from public to private in order to create a gated development. In order to accommodate the gated entry features, we are losing two lots, that brings down the unit count of the project from 118 units to 116 dwelling units. And then, lastly, we are proposing changes to the planting and screening within the roadway buffers and the green belts for the project. We wish to provide planting and screening within these buffers consistent with the current LDC, whereas previously, they were approved consistent with the requirements of the previous north central overlay district. Besides these four noted changes, there are no additional changes to the proposed unit types, buffers, and site design in general. So, our request today is consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. We are still within the density requirements of the Urban Fringe Future Land Use District. In fact, this is a reduction in density. We're also consistent with the current Manatee County Land Development Code, and we're also consistent with the intent of the prior approval as a single-family community. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and my team and I are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, and for the record, I'm assuming the chairmanship, I made a mistake, I have to recuse myself from item number eight, the other Rye Road project. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead, and as this is a presentation upon request, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. So, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close. I bet you haven't been sworn either.
I have not.
All right. Everybody knows the drill, so if you intend to speak, please rise to be sworn in.
Do you swear or confirm that the factual statements in our presentation, we are about to make to the management commission are truthful and accurate? I do.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Jesse. I've been sworn in now, and I live in Manatee County.
Thank you very much.
Some of you remember me. We spoke about the Rye Crossing development a couple months ago, when it was before the board. I'm not complaining about them lowering the number of houses, I think that's great. I just want to continue to reiterate that with them changing how wide that connector road has to be, you're forcing a lot of cars into a very small space where they're gonna exit on Rye Road. Rye Road, the traffic is getting worse and worse by the day. Rye Ranch is actively being developed right north of them. And so, I just want to point out that we have to continue to consider these things as we go forward with more and more. I think you have another thing today on Rye Road. How are we gonna maintain that road? There is nothing scheduled to happen. There's no traffic lights coming. There is no road widening on North Rye Road. There are no shoulders. So, as you continue to hear things like that, you know, today and over the next month, I just ask that you be aware of the fact that nothing is being done on Rye Road as we continue to allow all these developments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With, is there anybody else who wishes to come to speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing, and open it up for questions, discussions.
Chair, I have a question for staff. I have issued one of the stipulations here.
Okay, yes, ma'am, if you would, please.
Can staff explain or delete stipulation E2, the access thing?
Marshall Robinson, I'm a staff planner, and I have been sworn. Yeah, of course, we can do whatever the commission would request of us. The reason that stipulation was put in, it was put in a little bit at the last minute. The applicant had reached out and wanted to make sure that this application for right crossing specifically addressed the cross access. As you know, and as the applicant stated, this is common ownership between the Rutland Development and the Rye Crossing Development. They asked us to put language in there that cross-referenced the construction and development of the cross-access easement, seeing as how the Rutland project that was previously approved requested that cross-access, and this Rye Crossing development is to reciprocate that request. But, in their efforts to accommodate the request from the south for the cross-access, they had asked that we put a stipulation in this development that would put the Rutland Development responsible for the construction of the cross-access. So, that's why it's there.
That by stipulation, the developers have, in agreement with themselves, I guess, and who's gonna pay for the improvement. We don't get involved in that.
Okay, so, would then the way we would need to do that is to have an agreement amongst themselves on file or on record for the cross-access?
Yeah, I know, it sounds strange, but they have to agree among themselves who pays for things. We don't get involved in that.
Okay.
So, I would delete the stipulation.
Okay, and we'll clean that up before the board and get with the applicant. Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Schenck, you're saying E2?
E2.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, I mean, you have no issue with the representation of that road that terminates at the property boundary, it's just we don't, we can't condition or stipulate it? Is that accurate?
Well, it's shown on the plans.
Yeah.
It's perfectly acceptable on the plans.
Okay, all right. Mr. Roth.
So, they just asked about improvement. It was a question, a question about improvement on the road? Is there anybody here who can answer that from the county?
We have our transportation department represented here, I believe.
Somewhere? Anywhere?
Yeah, if we could, maybe...
Transportation's here for the staff. They can come up and speak to the roads.
Thank you. Good morning.
Bruni Bonifil, Transportation Planning, Section Manager.
Can you turn on your mic?
I think it was on.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Once again, my name is Bruni Bonifil, Transportation Planning, Section Manager. I've been sworn. That there are, this is a revised application, and they already submitted the traffic study, and where the access on Rye Road, they have to provide turn lane to accommodate the traffic that will be entering the property. But, this application is, they defer concurrency for this application, since the previously approved application already provided concurrency related improvement at the access point.
Let me rephrase the question. Do we have any proposal for the future, as far as the county is concerned, for the widening or anything of this road?
No, Rye Road is not in the CIB, no.
Nothing.
No.
And when you say it's not in the CIB, that indicates it's not funded, is that...
It's not funded now.
Yeah.
That's been, if you look at the 2045 long range transportation planning, we have planned to add it, but now, it's not funded for any...
So, I think it's an incorrect representation, that it's not being considered or not being planned on. It is, it's just not currently funded, is that correct?
It's not currently funded, yes.
So, I'm sorry, what was the timeframe that you mentioned?
If you look at the 2045 map...
Right.
But, we don't have any timeframe now for it to be.
And that's a 20-year look ahead. That doesn't mean it's gonna take 20 years. It could be pulled forward into the CIB.
It's based on the funding, it's based on the market. That's mean, we may have it, I don't know, in the next 10 years, but we don't know yet.
Yeah, and...
There's no commitment for the county to be leaded now.
And that trigger is related to concurrency, is that correct? Or trips, maybe not concurrency, because that's more of a development.
You're talking about the access related improvement?
Mm-hmm.
It was based on the trip generated by the project.
No, I'm not specific to this project, to Rye Road as a whole, as a county asset or county right-of-way. The, it's a combination of trips, not necessarily one project.
No, no, yeah, you have a lot of project in this area.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right.
Can I continue?
Yes, please.
So, what you're telling me is, or maybe the, is there a study right now, based on what is going to happen?
For...
It's on this plan, to, I mean, do we know whether it will be A, B, C, or D, or it will be overloaded, or, I mean, people just said, there's not enough room for it to be what's going on. Is that gonna be a problem tomorrow, when they get it done?
No, tomorrow it should be not. When this project was approved, at that time, Rye Road had plenty of capacity, but now it may be different. But, at that time, when this project was approved, it was not failing. That's been, that they required to do is only to provide the turn lane at the southbound right and northbound left. That will be on the applicant to provide these turn lanes for the access on the...
All right, let me see if I got this straight. What you're telling me is, there is no current traffic study being provided by the people who want to build this, is that correct?
No, there was a traffic study that was previously approved. This is a modification to the previously approved traffic study. But, when the traffic study was approved, they were supposed to provide the southbound right and leftbound and northbound, southbound right and...
When was the traffic study approved?
I think it was about two years ago.
Maybe we can make this more concise. So, as, generally speaking, when we look at development, there are two considerations. One is a capacity consideration, capacity of the roadway, and the other is an operational consideration. The turn lanes deal with the operational components of the project, is that correct?
Yes.
And those were previously proposed, and they're still proposed.
Yes.
Right. And the capacity question is the volume within the roadway proper. So, it was previously presented, and that capacity met concurrency, and it was approved, is that correct?
Yes, at that time, yes.
And this application is reducing the number of trips associated with the project, is that true?
Yes. Yes or no? Even no, it's not going to trigger anything?
Let me change that. It's not increasing the trips?
No.
So, the previous application, I'm sorry, the previous traffic study, and...
It's still valid.
It's still valid?
Yes.
That being said, whenever you do a consideration or analysis on the roadway, Rye Road, it's gonna have, for lack of a better description, paper trips. These trips are being added to the consideration of anything else going on in this area. It's...
Yes, you have what you call concurrency link sheet. That's been, when you have a new project, that's been the trip for this project added to the link sheet.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, you have, you're accounting for future projects that have been approved, you're accounting for the travel, the trips, is that correct?
Yes.
And with that analysis, it still shows that it's a serviceable road, correct?
At that time.
At that time.
Yes.
But, other projects maybe have come in and...
After that, yes.
Yeah. So, it wasn't this project that would have maybe tripped something.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, all right. Ms. Greer, was there anything additional? I know you had an opinion on something.
Denise Greer for Development Services, and I have been sworn. I was just gonna make sure that you understood, they do, they are required to do a left and a right turn lane into the entrance, and we do have other projects on Rye Road that have LDA, that have been approved, that will make other improvements. But, for this project, they are required to do a right and a left turn lane. And it was previously approved.
Right.
So, what you have today is just a minor modification to reduce the number of lots and the connection to the property to the south.
And in broad terms, projects that are, every project that comes in, they're gonna have to go through an analysis, and they're gonna either have to, they'll look at operational improvements and capacity.
Correct.
And the operational, generally, are gonna trigger turn lanes, which the intent is to get the car out of the travel lane, so it can make a maneuver and not stop traffic. So, there is somewhat of a benefit to that. But, every applicant, every home that's built out there, they pay into an impact fee that is directly tied to transportation, is that correct?
Correct.
And that is a source of funding, potential funding for improvements to the roadway?
It is.
So, okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Roth, is there anything additional?
I'm done.
All right. Everybody's favorite thing, traffic.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration of a motion. Anyone?
Make motion.
All right, Mr. Smock.
I move to recommend approval of the Manatee County zoning ordinance number PDR-19-09PR, approval of preliminary site plans with stipulations A1 through A6, B1 through B9, C1 through C2, D1, and E1. Do an E2 also, or...
E2 was omitted.
So, no E2.
Yes, that's correct, no E2.
Poor E2.
Poor E2.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, we have a second. So, we'll call the matter to vote. We're gonna do it by voice, since we're having some technical difficulties, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. All right, before we go on to the next applicant...
Just make sure, so the computer says Bill Colley's absent, so we'll correct that, that you voted correct somewhere.
I can provide testimony that I'm here, so...
Okay, well, before I said... Okay, well, before I said, I just make sure we're correct. Okay, I see it, it's corrected. Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, before we go to the next application, there's a little bit of cleanup. The, the chair forgot to ask a couple of questions here. So on item number three, South Point, were there any ex parte communications?
No.
No.
For the record. All right, thank you. On item number four, Bay Drive Townhomes, were there any ex parte communications?
No.
No.
Okay.
Well, those ones, you chair, I just make sure, the acting chair follows the rules.
I did mine.
Amateur, amateur. All right, we're going to move on to item number seven. Ms., Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number seven into the record?
Item number seven, PDC 2124 CP Park A Premium Outdoor Storage, Blue One Investment Group. And it's a quasi judicial case and Marshall Robinson, principal planner, is the case manager. This is a rezon more or less 4.49 acres located in the north side of State Road 70 East between Vernon Bethany Road and Vernon Road, commonly known as.
Man, technology has given us a hard time today.
I'm having a tough day.
We can edit that out in post-production soon.
Check. Okay, PDC 2124 CP Park A Premium Outdoor Storage, Blue One Investment Group, quasi judicial case, and Mr. Marshall Robinson, principal planner, is the case manager. And the proposal is for a rezon more or less 4.49 acres located in the north side of State Road 70 East between Vernon Bethany Road and Vernon Road, and commonly known as 26635 State Road 70 East, Mayaka, Manatee County. From A, general agriculture, to the PDC Plan Development Commercial Zoning District, and approving a preliminary site plan for an outdoor storage as principal use to allow recreational vehicles, RVs, and boat storage.
Thank you. For the record, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
No.
Okay, thank you. Who do we have for the applicant? Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Brian Lichterman. I'm a professional land use planner for over 35 years. I am a resident of Manatee County and I have been sworn.
Thank you. If, if you could just briefly introduce it, it is a presentation upon request, so.
Yes, okay. This is a presentation upon request. I'm here representing the owners of the property, Mr. Scott Harold and Mr. Jerry Martella, who will be the developers of the proposed Park A Premium Outdoor Storage on a 4.5 acre property along State Road 70 east of Vernon Bethany Road. It is both a rezoning and a preliminary site plan. I do have a PowerPoint presentation and I will try to be as quickly as I can go through it. Just to, the team members are myself, Ron Civitz, who's with me and will be speaking, Todd Hirschfeld from Kimley Horn, and also Marla Hoff was the transportation engineer in this project. Very quickly, just some of the major project components. As I indicated, it's 4.49 acres in size. It's a rezoning petition from A, general agriculture, to PDC Plan Development Commercial, which allows outdoor storage as a permitted use. It is consistent with the commercial location criteria for commercial development in the AgR Future Land Use Classification because it is located within the 800 foot of a commercial node at the intersection of two functionally classified roadways. We're proposing 105 parking spaces for RVs and boats, including 36 covered spaces. We're showing approximately 35% open space, although only 20% is required. And this project will help to satisfy the strong demand created by existing and future development in this area. Just to help identify this, this graphic shows the location of the property, which is approximately 12.5 miles east of I-75 on the north side of State Road 70. This slide shows you the location. Immediately to the south of this property is a Mayaka fire station. This is just another aerial, giving you more of an indication. There were no environmental habitats on this site. Once again, this is a future land use plan map. It is designated agricultural rural. There is a property immediately to the west of this property of the exact same size, which was previously zoned for PDR, which would allow a convenience store and a gas station on this property. This is a copy of the preliminary site plan. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Ron Civitz, who's the project architect, and let him go through this, and then I'll be back before you.
All right, Ron, before you speak, I just want to clarify that Bill Connolly did have, for the record, Bill Connolly did have to recuse himself, so go ahead.
Okay, no, no problem. Hi. My name's Ron Civitz. I live in Sarasota County and I have been sworn in. This is the plan that, a portion of the plans that were submitted to, to Manatee County and worked through staff with all the necessary notes and information. This is more of a cleaned up version that shows landscape buffer, the, the parking spaces for the boats and RVs, the covered areas, the ingress egress, stormwater retention. There is a wall, perimeter wall around the front, excuse me, around the front portion, permacast type wall and a opaque fence around the perimeter of the entire thing. The areas for the RV boat parking spaces will be done so that it's not a hard impervious surface. And, let's see, all right, this is the proposed development shown on aerial photograph in the surrounding area. And I think that, you know, this use is a good, a good spot for this use with all the residential development happening. And most of the new developments have deed restrictions where you cannot park boats and RVs, that they need a place to, to put them, a nice place. So I'll turn it back to Brian. Thank you very much.
And this next slide is pretty important. There is a proposed future roundabout on State Road 70 that is both a Manatee County and Florida Department of Transportation project. And as you can see, I've highlighted in green the location of the proposed project in relationship to that roundabout. And the roundabout is, like I indicated, both a joint FDOT and Manatee County project. However, a specific date for construction has not been determined. There will not be a need for any right-of-way from this project to satisfy the needs for that roundabout. This proposed development has taken into consideration the location of that roundabout, which will actually result in a significant reduction in speed along State Road 70 as, as vehicles slow down. So it does work out very well that this can tie into the fact that speeds will be significantly reduced in this area. Just some of the elements out of the staff report that I wanted to highlight for you. It does meet the locational criteria of objective 2.10.4. It meets the limitations on the types of permitted uses and requirements for limiting gross building area. It meets all the access objectives of objective 2.10.3, and it meets all the policies of 2.10.41 and 10.42, requiring nodal commercial development. And the site is located within the 800 feet requirement. It's also, the land, the preliminary site plan is in compliance with all these various components of the land development regulations. It meets the locational criteria. I'll just try to be quick. It was a couple items that I thought were very relevant from the staff report, is one of the significant aspects of a boat and RV storage facility is the very low impact of trips on the roadway network, and there's no demand for schools and only minimal impact on streets and other public facilities and services, including potable water, sewer, and reclaimed water. It is these minimal impacts of this project which makes it so compatible. Staff also noted that the proposed preliminary site plan will be found consistent with all applicable requirements of the Land Development Code, including LDC Section 5.3.136 related to outdoor storage. There's a very strong demand for boat and RV storage in Manatee County. Almost all the existing boat and RV facilities within a five mile radius are already at capacity or there's a waiting list. Almost all new housing in the region contains deed restrictions which prohibit outdoor storage of boats and RVs, and there's thousands of new homes that are approved in the service area. I know you can't see all this, but just to, I wanted to throw a graphic up there that shows that there's over 15,000 new homes that are planned in this area. And in Manatee County alone, there's been over 22,000 new boat and RV permits in 2022. I have lots of statistics, but I'm not going to bother you with all of them. But I have done a lot of research on this and there's a very strong demand for this. So with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation. I will note that we did hold a neighborhood workshop on this, even though it's an optional consideration in Manatee County. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, Brian. So how much of this will be covered?
There will be approximately 36 spots that will be covered. The rest will all be open.
And what's the rest mean?
There's a total of 105 spaces.
So of 105 spaces, less, about a third will be covered spaces. Okay. My next question is, to the east and the west, what is permitted for other, what's the current zoning for either left and right?
As I indicated on one of my slides, the property immediately to the west is already zoned PTC, which is the same zoning that we're asking for, and that was previously approved for a gas station and a convenience store.
Perfect. And what about the other side?
To the east is just agricultural rural lands. But as I noted, when the county puts in that future roundabout there, the roadway that is going to extend north and connect with Vernon Bethany will create basically no, no land uses in that area.
What about behind it?
Well, that's what I said. The, as that road travels north and then winds to the west, there won't be any land uses within that area other than just some open space. I can show you on a graphic if.
Okay, so what you're saying is the two lots that appear to be behind it are not going to be occupied, or they have no zoning, or?
Well, as you can see, the roadway will come to the northern limits of this property. So there is a property immediately to the north, but nothing between the roadway and this property. But north of that, there would be a, I believe, a single-family home.
Maybe a member of the staff can tell me. Is there any plan for any kind of residential use behind this, like another community that we know about?
We don't have any plans. To the north is Sun AA could be developed with agriculture uses or any single-family residential that is allowed.
This is an excellent location, by the way. Nicely done.
Great, thank you very much.
The ingress egress onto 70, is it two-way or a right turn in, right?
It would be a right in, right out. And you would be able to make a left, but eventually when the roundabout takes place, it's a little difficult to see, but it does extend towards the west through this property. So you would not be able to turn left. A vehicle would need to go through the roundabout, come back, and then safely be able to enter into the project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any more questions? Anyone here for the staff presentation? Then let's open this up to public comments and questions. Anyone in the public have a comment, a question you want to add in, especially if you've already been sworn?
Well done.
All right, then we'll close the public comments and ask applicant, is there any more questions? If you have any rebuttals, obviously there's.
No, sir.
All right, excellent. Then we'll close the presentation and open for deliberations, discussions, and/or a motion.
I'll make a motion. Let's see if I have this. I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County's zoning ordinance number PDC 2124ZP and approval of the preliminary site plan, stipulations A1 through A5, B1 through B5, and C1.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second was paid by.
Ray Turner.
Ray Turner.
Thank you.
And the chair votes aye, and with the, it passes four to nothing with Bill Connolly abstaining. And we finish them.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, can we take a break for the next one? We just take a break at 10:30.
Okay, I'm, I'm down with that. You want a 15-minute break, or?
10.
10, 10-minute break. We're going to, we'll go 11 minutes, just in case. I have that power.
Don't let it get to your head.
Sort of the roundabout there, kind of almost in the middle of the screen at 64 and Rye Road. And we're just on the north side of Mill Creek, actually Phase 7. Mill Creek is actually on both sides of Rye Road here. And if you look in this area, there's been a lot going on. There's a new public shopping center. There's, of course, Jeanwood Elementary has been there for some years. And we have a county park in the area with the Rye Wilderness Park. And we have a fire station almost next to Jeanwood Elementary as well. The conference of plan for this project, the land use designation is urban fringe 3. And urban fringe 3 supports a lot of suburban type residential uses. We're inside the county's water and sewer service area. And it's an area, obviously, just what we mentioned before, it's an area of the existing services. There's a fire station right up the street. There's a school and county park right up the street. And there's a lot of other stuff going on in this area. It's kind of a fast developing area. From a zoning perspective, we are zoned agricultural. Around us is PDR to the south. And there's a lot of the development in this area has been, especially the single family residential, has been mostly developed in the PDR fashion, if it's been like a subdivision. And that's for a lot of reasons. PDR has a lot of high aesthetic standards, a lot of consistent standards that you see reflected. And it provides a lot of certainty, not just for planning commission board, but also certainly for citizens in terms of what to expect when a project comes in, what it's going to be like aesthetically and that kind of thing. So right now, we are zoned A. And there was, there is an older house on this site. The site, you can see by overlaying the aerial photograph, there's actually, if you look more towards the middle of the site, there is actually sort of this hashed in color that sort of runs through the site. That's actually a natural gas line transmission easement that runs through the property. There's, it runs across the county. And you'll have a lot of subdivisions that are built sort of around this natural gas transmission easement as well. You can see the site is again on the north side of Mill Creek Phase 7. That's a little bit easier to read. We added some, added some color to it. So there's 73 single family homes. Mostly will be like two stories in height. Of course, the height of the house basically comes during when somebody comes in the model home and they decide they want a two story or one story, that kind of thing, from a menu of options from the builder. The density of this is, of course, urban fringe 3 has a maximum of three dwelling units per acre. We're proposing 1.99, just about, of course, just under two. The lots are 50 by 130, so about 6,500 square feet. And we exceed the open space quite a bit. The 25% is the minimum required. And we have 44.9% of the site is open space. So we do have, the site is a little bit unique in its sort of its layout. And also in terms of, it's almost like infill development. It's an area where there's already some houses built. There's a subdivision to our south. And it has this platted 16th Drive East access road, also called, we call it Street A on the site plan that runs all the way into where the houses are. Looking at this site here, we just have, we do have some access improvements we're going to be doing also. I'll get into that in a minute. But you can see kind of where we're at with adjacent to Mill Creek and the property also to the north along the access drive. We are proposing, Mill Creek, there's a street called 145th there on the west side or the western part of this picture. And it's an emergency access to a stub out we're proposing. There is a dead end stub out there, 145th and Mill Creek. And we're just going to be limiting that to an emergency access only. We are proposing to have an open pedestrian connection to our site, which then people could actually get a little bit shorter distance over to Rye Road. So zooming in a little bit to the east side of the site, you can see what the lot layout is. 23 foot front setbacks, five foot sides and 50 foot rears. And looking at, so you can see the surrounding, what the uses are. It's zoned A to the north and PDR to the south and zoned A to the east as well. It's an area of, while the zoning is a, a lot of the uses are single family residential. And a lot of people have barns and things like that in the surrounding area. Zooming out again, this is going to be a gated community. The gate's going to be located, kind of, you can see right almost like in the middle of the picture there, there's actually, it looks like sort of a circle with a couple of green holes in it. That's actually the access gate and turnarounds. So it will be a gated access. These will be private streets in this area. It will be county water and sewer. Zooming in a bit to the access point, we are proposing some transportation safety improvements. Now, our site is 73 units, which didn't require us to do a full traffic impact analysis, but we did have to do a traffic impact statement. But we also did a full intersection analysis. We are almost like an infill site. There's a lot of other driveways in the area. So we worked with county engineering on coming up with some pretty creative solutions to not only providing right turn lanes for our future residents into our site, but also a dedicated left turn lane. And we also were able to squeeze in a dedicated left turn lane for Mill Creek on the west side of Rye Road. So while I know there could be probably some discussion about the traffic on Rye Road, these are actually, they do add a little bit of capacity when you put some turn lanes in to get people out of the way to make safe turn movements. So we were able to sort of fit all this in. We're also providing, again, I mentioned the pedestrian connection. We'll have, we could have that open. And we're also proposing to have rapid flashing beacon over by the intersection of Mill Creek. So people could actually, if you've ever been on Rye Road actually during school hours, it's probably one of the best schools in the county in terms of kids walking a bike into school. When the county did those improvements on Rye Road several years ago, they put in a 12 foot wide multi-use path to really to facilitate the number of kids that really use it for that. So having that pedestrian connection for us will save, as somebody who walked to school K through 12 their entire life, this saves kids about a half a mile. So I think it's a great idea personally, if I was having to make this hike. But you can get across the road safely. And as we go through that process with final site plan, and obviously we'll be coordinating that with county traffic engineering like we've had in the past. So if you were actually going to stand on the site today, this is what 16th Avenue Drive East looks like. You're sort of looking to the east on Rye Road, almost like standing in the bike lane. So if you kind of looked, this is what it would look like with sort of a concept of you're coming, pulling into the right turn lane on northbound Rye Road. And we're going to try to obviously preserve as much of the native vegetation as we can. We don't have a lot of frontage on Rye Road. But we're going to try to work that in as best we can. Again, another picture of what it could look like. These are just concepts of what the entrance will look like on to Rye Road. Again, that gated, that access to Mill Creek will just be a gated emergency access only, just in case it's needed for first responders and that kind of thing. In case they need an extra weight in to Mill Creek Phase 7. There is, we do have several specific approval requests, just because of the nature of the site, the shape, and also just some of the constraints we have with the access drive. The access drive is about 60 feet wide. And in planned development residential zoning, you're required to have 15 foot landscape buffer all around everything. So when you think of something that's 60 feet wide, you try to put a road in there into 15 foot landscape buffers, and then to provide the geometry of the road to make sure the fire trucks can make the appropriate turns and that kind of thing. So we need a little bit of help there with some of the landscape buffers in terms of shrinking them up in places. And also they can be a little bit wider in other places. But providing where they got shrunk up, some enhanced landscaping to provide the same impact, we hope, in terms of mitigating for a little bit narrower green belt buffer. We're also, the access drive, given how near it is as well, instead of having a sidewalk on both the north and the south side of it, all the way back to where the houses are, we're proposing just one sidewalk. It's actually a little bit wider, a six foot wide sidewalk, instead of just, instead of two five foot on both sides of the road. So there's a specific approval request for that as well. And again, the emergency access, the stub out and Phase 7 of Mill Creek, again, it'll just be gated and screened and it'll be a pedestrian connection. Looking at the road itself and the overall site layout, it is quite a distance back in terms of how long the road is. But we also have been working with the county public safety and the county fire folks in terms of the fire district, in terms of what that looks like and what the spacing of its emergency access turnarounds and that kind of thing for that. And that's, that's part of the specific approval request as well is for, you know, the county requires a specific approval in cases where a cul-de-sac has to be longer than 800 feet. In terms of a green belt buffer, there's a couple places, you can see them highlighted here on the site plan, where we're required to maintain, certainly we have a 50 foot green belt, green belt buffer there. But when you're adjacent to A zoning, agricultural zoning, there's a requirement to have a little bit wider yard, like a 35 foot yard minimum, kind of a setback. And what happens is, is when you have a side yard setback and the type of houses that we get built today, it becomes a little challenging for the, for the site design for this project for us. Also, one of the things we're doing is we really clustered the development as far as away from, to minimize any wetland impacts. We do have some, but we tried to consolidate as much as we could for that. But in these places where we're not meeting that, the agricultural A-zoned property setbacks, we are providing, providing and proposing some enhanced green belt buffers beyond county standards as mitigation to try to, try to make up for that. And again, that agricultural setback, I kind of go back to when I worked at the county years ago, I know that always in the back of my mind was, it was sort of a setback for agriculture operations, something whether you have pumps and equipment and citrus grows and heavy ag kind of use. And this is, basically we're adjacent to, you know, single family residential and with a barn and that kind of thing. So it's not really heavy ag, which I think might have been the intent for it, you know, back in the day. In terms of wetlands, there are 2.6 acres of wetlands on the site. We do have some impacts to those. We are providing and propose an enhancement plan and habitat restoration plan for those wetland impacts. And again, we are providing and far exceeding the minimum open space requirements. In terms of the south, Mill Creek actually Phase 7 to the south has platted a, actually a 35 foot buffer on their property as well. So when they built back in the day, they were PDR zoned. They went and far exceeded their buffer requirements. So between our 15 foot landscape buffer on the south and their 35, there's quite a bit of, quite a big good landscaping between the two projects. So again, if you're standing out there looking into the site, this is what the 16th Avenue Drive looks like today, looking north. You know, of course, Rye Road had some improvements several years ago. A lot of, it was more of a functional improvement, made it a better two lane with bike lanes, a 12 foot multi-use path. And there's a lot of utility improvements that were associated with that capital improvement project years ago. Looking into the south, you can see what it looks like. And again, those locations will be providing, you know, the turn lanes and the D cell lane and that kind of thing, which again, do add a little bit of capacity to the roadway. This is actually looking at the stub out today, the dead end in Mill Creek, looking to the north. And actually, if you kind of squint and look really carefully, you can kind of see across 16th Avenue Drive to the properties to our north. And keep in mind too, when actually the, if this project is approved moving forward and gets built, that green belt buffer will be on the north side and that'll be heavily screened. So you probably won't see as much as you see today, if anything. So we did have a neighbor workshop in March of 2022. We had about 16 folks attend that were from the outside. And we had some comments and concerns about access, about the impact of traffic, what about landscape buffers, what about fencing, what about any restrictions for the emergency access, which we actually proffered that right up front even before the meeting. Concerns about Rye Road, concerns about the traffic, what about environment, what about tree preservation, flooding concerns, any proposed products, with examples of what, you know, our products typically look like. And we gave us some examples of some local subdivisions, which are very similar to the ones we're proposing here. And Chris Perreira, our, for Polty Homes, has continued the conversation with some of the residents post-workshop as well. So criteria for review, we certainly have criteria. We believe with the county stipulations and our mitigation proposed for our specific approvals that we've met the criteria, the comp plan and code for the zoning map amendment, the PSP and the design requirements for planned development site plans. Of course, we'll, we have to go through, you know, in the future, go to the board and then of course, go through the final site plan process for more detailed engineering and design review of all the things we're going through and propose and showing you here. In terms of landscape buffers, PDR does provide a very nice, healthy buffer, 15 feet wide. That's the standard. We are proposing to deviate that from that a little bit in places, but also proposing more intensification of the buffer where it is a little bit narrower in our site. And these are just examples of what buffers typically look like when they get, a couple of years under their belts too. These aren't exactly what we're, you know, can't say that it'll be exactly like ours. But these are typical PDR buffers that are in the area and what they look like. And they're pretty healthy, have a pretty good opacity and that kind of thing. So for our residential subdivision, we're not proposing any direct vehicle access to Mill Creek. We do, PDR does, all the requirements of it are, have a very high aesthetic value. It provides a lot of certainty, not just for, certainly for us and working through the county on the process, but also certainly for the residence board and planning commission as well. In terms of how, you know, a question that comes up, I think every hearing is, you know, from a lot of residents is, how does a county, county handle all this growth? Well, the county has master plans. There's master plans for water, sewer, roadways, parks, library, everything's got a master plan. And as you have different areas of growth, it kind of looks to those plans and identifies future potential capital improvement projects to put in the CIP for the board then to go build. Primary funding source for roads is impact fees. And also we have a half cent sales tax. So the county actually, every summer in this room, the county goes through and looks at the necessary projects in the budget hearings. And they identify projects for the, for the next CIP. Our project will be providing at 73 units, about $2 million of transportation impact fees that, you know, by law have to be spent in this area. We hope they get spent on Rye Road personally. But we provide that and that every project in the area certainly provides transportation impact fees, including water and sewer fees and parks impact fees, law enforcement, all the other things are also paid for in the form of impact fees. And the county takes that money, then adds capacity adding. They have to be capacity adding improvements. And with transportation, they have to be spent in this specific area. So we are requesting approval today for the rezone from A to PDR for 1.99 dwelling units per acre with the four specific approvals I mentioned. And we believe that we provided sufficient mitigation to mitigate any concerns by staff for those specific approvals. And we appreciate the work that staff has gone into this. I know they've been, worked late last night on this project. So we appreciate their time and attention and working also with county engineering for a creative solution to some of the traffic improvements that we were able to work out that not just benefit our residents and the safety of our future residents, but also for the traveling public on Rye Road. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Okay, so this property has been available for how many years?
It's, it's, well, it has a house on it that is quite dilapidated. In terms of being for sale, I'm not sure how long it's been for sale.
I see, okay. The width of the road that you would come in on from Rye Road, how wide will that be?
So the road will meet current county standards. It'll be, it'll be two 12 foot travel lanes. The asphalt will be 24 feet wide. So it'll be, it'd be a standard county width local street.
And is that property wide enough as far as ownership is concerned to have that occur?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you're going to put 73 houses how far back from Rye Road? When does it start?
So the distance going back, the gate is approximately, let me see here. The access gate is about 2,000 feet or so back from Rye Road.
So about a half a mile?
Yes, sir.
And then you're going to fit 73 houses on how many acres?
36, plus or minus.
How much, 36? So from where you're saying it's going to start, there's 36 acres to put 73 houses?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And how wide and deep will each lot be?
So the lots are 50 by 130. So about 6,500 square feet.
Over an acre each?
No, sir.
Oh, 5,500?
No, 50 feet by 130 feet. So there's 6,500 square foot lot.
6,500 square foot lots.
An acre is 43,560.
Yeah, no, I know what an acre is. I guess what I'm asking is...
I get my mile and my acre confused sometimes.
You're going to put a what, a 6,300 square foot lot?
Yes, sir.
And how big are the houses going to be?
Houses could range anywhere from 1,700 square feet, 2,000 square feet. Typical three bedroom, two bath. There's two other subdivisions actually.
One story?
No, sir. Some will be one story and some will be two story.
Okay, and north of this is Mill Creek?
South of this is Mill Creek.
And north of this is?
Just more agriculturally zoned property, single family homes.
What a line road is, how far north?
It's probably 100, 200 feet to the north or so, I'm guessing a little bit there.
I've been on this property 18 years ago.
Really?
And I'm worried about it being wide enough and safe enough to run a fire truck in there and back. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I think you addressed that though.
Yeah, I heard.
Yes, sir. And the last, in the site plan package that you have, sir, there is actually a template. And we had the fire truck that East Manatee Fire Rescue uses, the biggest one they got. And we ran that template and it works for the site, including the turnarounds.
Any more questions? Anyone like to hear from staff presentation? Then we'll open up for public comments. I don't have any speaker cards here. Anyone in the public like to come up and speak to the issue?
Megan Mercurio, Manatee County, and I've been sworn in. I just have a quick question. About a year ago, we had someone come through and clear out 16th Avenue. So I don't know if you guys are going to come back through and clear out more greenery and...
You make the present, your question to us and...
Greenery and all the trees and everything, if it's going to be cut back more till Mill Creek and we're going to lose more trees or if it's already been done and cleared out. That's pretty much.
Okay. Any more questions and any more comments? We're going to close the public comments first. Close public comments, if you, you want to ask your question or? All right, you want to address the issue, please?
Yes, sir. So when it comes to 16th Avenue Drive East and also the rest of the property, there certainly will be some clearing on 16th Avenue Drive East and obviously the property consistent with the site plan. In terms of the perimeter, our perimeter of our property, we have to put in, the county requires us to put in a green belt buffer. However, where we can use existing vegetation, we will, if we can. So that is something we'll be working with the county environmental staff on as we move forward, if we can do that kind of thing. And it depends upon also some elevations, drainage and that kind of stuff. If the trees will remain healthy and that kind of stuff. But worst case scenario, you'll have the green belt buffers consistent with everywhere else. And keep in mind too, that Mill Creek does have on their property a 35 foot buffer as well. Thanks, sir.
Not exactly clear as mud, but I hope, I hope it does give you some relief.
I have one more.
One more question?
I'm sorry, I'm getting hopping up again. You said there's just a sidewalk on one side of the access road and it'll be wider than a normal pedestrian sidewalk. Will that accommodate bikes, like a multi-use path?
Yes, ma'am, you can ride, you can ride a bike on it, you can walk on it. Normal sidewalk in Manatee County is five foot in width. And we're proposing to have it, we can fit in a little bit wider one. It's just challenging to have two five foot wide sidewalks on both sides.
I think that makes sense.
It's a little redundant too and kind of wasted concrete.
Yeah, as long as it's wider than the standard pedestrian.
Yes, ma'am.
That makes sense, okay.
All right. Any more questions? Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Public comments are closed, questions are asked of staff. Then we're to go ahead and close the staff comments and any rebuttals. And we're good, deliberations and decisions. And I would entertain a motion by someone who can actually read the motion.
Okay, let's see. I'm on the right one. Okay, all right, I'll read from here.
Mr. Chair, all you really have to, sorry. All you have to really say is the motion for approval as indicated in the staff report.
Oh, good, then I'll say that.
Then we won't all be so scared.
What she said, yes, I approve, I move to approve.
Then I need a second for what she says. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes four to zero with Bill Connolly abstaining. Thank you. Bill Connolly is back.
All right.
Oh, Mr. Connolly, I did want to indicate on the numbers, nine and 10, that both courses would advance. We could hold the hearings together and vote separate.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess we're up to item number nine and 10.
Item number nine, PA 2207, ordinance 2323, form on all as 2250. Crosswind Ranch is small scale comprehensive plan amendment. It's a legislative case and the case manager is Mr. Bilochay, principal planner. And it's amended, the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, provided for a privately initiated, small scale map amendment to the future land use map to designate a specific real property generally located in the north sides of State Road 62 is, is of King Road and West or Corbett John Road at 9820 and 9900 Ken Road Parish, Manatee County, from the ag rural, agriculture rural future and use classification, 30 acres to the UF3 urban fringe future land use classification to be developed in accordance with policy 2.1, 2.8 of the comprehensive plan as a component of a large project located west of the future development area boundary. And item number 10 is PDR 2209 CG Crosswind Ranch, Crosswind Ranch Rezone, and it's a quasi judicial case. And Mr. Marshall Robinson, principal planner, is the case manager. And the proposal is for a rezone of more or less 440.9 acres, of which more or less 32.40 acres are east of the future development area boundary from A general agriculture to the PDR planned development residential zone in district and generally located more or less 2.25 miles east of US 201 along to the north sides of State Road 62 Parish, Manatee County, and approving a general development plan for a maximum of 1,322 single family detached residential dwellings and associated amenities.
Thank you. One item is legislative and one is...
Item number nine is legislative and under number 10 is the quasi judicial.
So quasi judicial, we still need to disclose any ex parte communications. So have there been any ex parte communications regarding this? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will open it up for the presentation.
Great, thank you.
And for the record, if you could state your name and that you've been sworn.
Kara Kaneg, land planner with ZNS Engineering, and I have been sworn, also a Manatee County resident.
Thank you.
The project before you today is Crosswind Ranch Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone, along with myself, there's Jeb Mullog from ZNS Engineering, Kyle Grimes from Grimes Hawkins, Gladefelter and Galvano, Nathan Poole from Vibe Engineering, and then we have representative of the developer, Amanda King here. To provide an overall context of the Crosswind Ranch site, the project is located east of 301 and along State Road 62. The total project area shown here is 440.9 acres. The request before you today is a future land use map amendment from AGR to UF3 for 29.97 acres of the 440.9 acre site and development to be proposed east of the F dab in accordance with Comprehensive Plan Policy 2.1, 2.8. Along with the small scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, we are proposing a rezone from A to PDR for the entire 440.9 acres with a general development plan for a maximum of 1,322 single family units. So to show the future land use map designations around the area, the majority of the property has future land use of UF3, which allows for three dwelling units per gross acre. And that's consistent with the land to the west and the south. And as you heard earlier today, Cone Ranch is just north of the site. So as mentioned, approximately 411 acres are already within the UF3 future land use category and only 29.97 are within the AGR future land use. So the Comprehensive Plan Amendment request here, you can see the F dab line shown in the teal dash line. The outlined yellow bulleted area is the 29.97 acres. And then the entire Crosswind Ranch development is, the outline is shown in the lighter yellow as well. Again, future land use map amendment is from AGR to UF3 and is consistent with the proposed properties surrounding this property and also is consistent with the suburban development growth in the area. So as you can see here, the portion of Cone Ranch that was shown earlier today is pending UF3 and that's shown to the east and north of the proposed AGR future land use to rez 3. The existing future land use allows for 0.2 dwelling units per gross acre. And the proposed future land use is three dwelling units per gross acre. Again, consistent with the development trends in the area. Another map showing the F dab boundary, so this portion of the AGR future land use, which is proposed to be amended to UF3, is contiguous with the F dab boundary. is proposed to be amended to UF3, is contiguous with the F-DAB boundary line on the west property line, and the overall development of Cone-Crosswind Ranch is located west of the F-DAB line, other than the 29.97 acres that's proposed for future land use. The F-DAB, the property, the 29.97 acres that is located east and north of the F-DAB line, is consistent with Comprehensive Plan Policy 2.1, 2.8. Not only is it contiguous to the F-DAB line along the west property line, but it is part of a master development, which is predominantly located west of the F-DAB line. It is a continuation of an existing master development, has a suburban development pattern with the UF3 future land use category. It has access to State Road 62, which is a thoroughfare through Keene Road, and there is available services and proposed services in this area to serve the proposed development. And there currently is, we are working on an LDA with county staff. To transition into the proposed rezone for the property, as you can see here, the PDMU zoning shown to the west and north is Cone Ranch, which was discussed earlier today, and then Gagney Development, which is just west and south of this parcel, was approved last month. So this is just another development of the overall master development in this area, which I'll show later in this slide. So for, along with the proposed rezone from A to PDR, the general development plan shown here is for the overall 440.9 acres. The project is proposing a maximum 1,322 single-family detached homes. The minimum lot size is 40 by 120, so 4,800 square feet. Again, max gross density is three dwelling units per acre. There are 25.56 acres of wetlands on site, and there are only minor wetland impacts proposed for the alignment of Keene Road. We are exceeding the roadway buffer requirements. We're providing the required 15-foot green belt buffers around the entire site. And again, we take access off of State Road 62 via Keene Road. And as you can see here, we will have inner neighborhood ties, not only to the Gagney, but also to the existing approved Cone Ranch. So just to provide an overall context, for the proposed master development included within this slide is Cone Ranch, Gagney, and Crosswind Ranch. So the entire development will be built, you know, in sync, and will provide a consistent development across the entire area, and will be in alignment with the suburban development We do have one specific approval request, which is a standard request to, for the 35-foot agricultural setback. If there is active ag adjacent at time of final site plan, in lieu of the 35-foot setback, we are proposing a 20-foot screening buffer. So that will need to meet screening buffer requirements, which provides 80% opacity if there is active agriculture adjacent. And there is a stipulation in the staff report which addresses the specific approval. So in conclusion, the future land use map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and development east of the F-DAB is consistent with policy 2.1, 2.8. The PDR rezone with GDP is also consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan, and we respectfully request your positive recommendation to the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Question, gentlemen. The F-DAB.
On your mic, please.
The F-DAB, which is, I guess, around it. Is water and sewer from the F-DAB available to this property? Yes?
Mr. Chair, Kyle Grimes, attorney of Grimes County, and I have been sworn. Yes, so we will be extending sewer, potable water, and everything to this development, and through the development that's within the F-DAB line, it'll go out to this portion of the property.
Thank you.
Isn't that part of the Comprehensive Plan requirement, that it be served from a community?
Yes.
Like a master plan community within?
Yes.
Yep.
If we do development pursuant to 2.1, 2.8.
Yeah.
It has to be served by Manatee County Utilities and extended at the cost of the developer to that area.
Perfect. Thank you.
One of the graphics, the overall, the master plan graphic, if you could maybe just pull that up real quick, just for context.
Sorry.
Yeah. We see two roadways that are extended through the property. Are those thoroughfares?
Yes, they are collector thoroughfare roadways. The one to the left, that's part of Cone Ranch, that's the Spencer Parish Road. Work has already been started on that with access to the Cone Ranch property, as some of that is under development. And with this project, the one on the right side of the screen, will be extending Keene Road, providing the 100 feet of right-of-way needed for that. It's a two-lane collector roadway on your thoroughfare plan. And so the developer will be constructing that through the project, and then it will eventually tie into Cone Ranch, where it'll continue on, all the way north to the north side of Cone Ranch.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Over to me.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Staff's presentation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. For the record, I'm Bill O'Shea, and principal planner with staff. And I'm going to say I've been sworn, in case I get in the conversation on the GDP. Could I go to the PowerPoint? Oh, thanks. Sorry. So Ms. Kaneg did an excellent job of summarizing the project, so I'm just going to maybe cover some things that she didn't, and go through my PowerPoint really quickly. She's already shown you the location of the site in relationship to the F-DAB. The area, the AGR that you see on the map, is a combination of Cone Ranch, which you saw earlier, and Crosswinds. So these are the last two pieces that are between UF3 and that PSP1 line in this area of the county. So we're going from ag rural, which allows currently .2 dwelling units per acre, to urban fringe three, which will allow three dwelling units per acre. As stated earlier, it's going to UF3. It appears that the current zoning and future land use category that exists today is the same as it was back in 1989 and 1990, when the comp plan and the Land Development Code were adopted. And the current zoning is ag. Showing you how all the pieces fit together, you can see how Cone Ranch kind of wraps around Crosswind, and there's some other developments in the area that are shown within proximity of the site. Public facilities for this site will be Harvey Elementary School, Buffalo Creek Middle School, Parish Community High School. There's no bus service east of Victory Road, off of 301 in Ellington, and there's multiple parks within a five-mile radius of the site. The positive aspects is this is a logical extension of the UF3 future land use category, given the emerging development trends in the area. The negative is it is development east of the F-DAB. However, we do have policy 2128, which guides us in those developments that are east of the F-DAB. The site will have to demonstrate compliance with that policy as they go through their development approvals, and then we will be doing a much more thorough analysis for compliance with the Manatee County Land Development Code with the subsequent or companion GDP that you'll see a little bit earlier, or a little bit later on today, or you've already seen by the applicant. In conclusion, this can be found to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comp plan, and we are requesting, the request today is for transmittal of the plan amendment. I'm sorry, it is not. That was for Cone Ranch. This one is just recommendation for approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Any questions for, yes, ma'am?
Just getting back to the F-DAB line, is there anything scheduled to actually look at the line comprehensively? I know there's these exceptions in place where you can develop east of the F-DAB line, but is there, is there anything in the planning to actually look at the whole line comprehensively in the near future, or what's the timing on that, if any?
Well, the board has directed staff to hire a consultant and work on rewriting the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. I don't believe there's any future intentions to change the line, other than perhaps through that process, which probably will commence soon and not be completed for at least two years.
Yeah. Last Comprehensive Plan I worked on took, like, nine years, so they can take a long time. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, do you have a presentation for the rezone?
Mr. Chair, my name is Marshall Robinson. I'm a staff planner, and I have been sworn, yes, I do have a presentation. I think most of the information's been covered, but I can bust through it right quick and touch on some of the implementations of the GDP and the zoning, housed by the UF3 and the proposed expansion of the UF3. Just wait for the PowerPoint. Oh, good. I was afraid Jenny was going to tell me I didn't put it in the folder. That's sweating. Okay. All right. Thanks. So here's a look at the site. It's approximately 440 acres, 32 of which, thereabouts, is the future proposal for the expansion of the UF3 shown here in this slide here. This is to take a look at the zoning. Of course, we saw the big zoomed-out map where we saw Gagney and Cone Ranch, along with the subject property that is Crosswind Ranch here. The request, quickly, 440 acres, rezone from A to PDR, proposing 1,322 single-family detached units. That's a max gross density of three dwelling units to the acre, or 2.99 units to the acre. They do have a specific approval request. It's to our agriculture, active agricultural setback. They are proposing to do a 20-foot screening buffer within that setback area there. We do have a stipulation, stipulation A3, to kind of subsidize some more clarity and transparency for that condition there. This is a look at the site plan. You'll notice kind of traversing north from south to northwest there, we've got the Keene Road extension. This is going to be a public thoroughfare that will be put in. I think maybe the applicant can get on record and talk about whether or not we got an LDA in place for that road, and how that road's going to be done. You can see on the plan here, we do have a lot of access arrows. We see the access arrows on both sides of the road for the Keene Road extension. We also see access on to State Road 62. We also see access off to the west for your inner neighborhood ties. The development standards, they're shown in the typical lot layout diagrams off to the right there. Those are consistent with these areas that we have in the surrounding area. You can see kind of a zoomed-out glance at the area out here. These are all PDs, and they all have similar development standards proposed by the applicant that we can see on these typicals, and in these development standard tables for height, open space, and access, along with lot sizes. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say. It's a pretty straightforward residential plan development with a lot of units. It's just that they got the comp plan amendment to address the expansion of the UF3, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Robinson?
No.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comments. So if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application, please do so now. And if you would, just state your name, your county of residence, and that you have been sworn. Good afternoon, or morning, or whatever we're in.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Jesse. I live in Manatee County, and I have been sworn in now.
Thank you.
I'll probably be a regular face here every time the F-DAB is mentioned for a while. The F-DAB is why I'll be here all day today. Like someone up at the dais mentioned, what's happening with the F-DAB? For kind of a history lesson, during COVID in November of 2021, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2.1, 2.8 was added, which all of a sudden kind of neutered the F-DAB. All of a sudden, if it's contiguous and coterminous, you can start expanding. And so we're seeing, all of a sudden, since December of this past year, with Taylor Ranch, with East River Ranch, now with Cone, and with Crosswind, all these developers are taking advantage of that change to the Comprehensive Plan. And I think it's really problematic, you know, if you have read 2 point, the F-DAB line was established, it says, you know, objective 2.1, 2, to limit urban sprawl and preserve agriculture as the primary land use east of the F-DAB through 2040. It's not 2040, but 2.1, 2.8 kind of made it so it was okay. And so I understand, you know, why Cone Ranch is just 30 acres or less, it's a little bit, but at one point are these incursions not okay? We're talking about a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is something you can say no to. This is the stage before rezoning where it's a lot easier. If you guys say, you know what? Let's hold off on this. Let's see where our infrastructure lies. And one of the things that those of us who are watching haven't been seeing touched upon with East River, with Taylor, with Cone, or with Crosswind, is 2.1, 2.8, item number D. I'll read it. It says, "Infrastructure for utilities and roads must be available to the area to be developed without adversely impacting the county's ability to serve the utility service area." And no one is talking about that last part, "without adversely impacting the county's ability to serve the utility service area." Right now, our utility service area is west of the F-DAB. I was on a call with Kimley Horn on Tuesday night, talking about expansions to Lake Manatee and to our water plants, because we're at capacity. We're seeing water mains break all over the place. We're not having conversations about, I get that developers can build in their area, but can our existing infrastructure, our water, our sewage, accommodate thousands of new houses east of the F-DAB? So I ask that you consider this, you know, in its entirety, Cone Ranch, Crosswind, East River, Taylor, do we have the capacity to take that on? Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and for the applicant. Mr. Grimes, could you please speak to the comment from the citizen regarding the ability to demonstrate that there's not a negative impact on the ability to provide services?
Yes. When policy 2.1, 2.8 was passed, it provides an exception for, you know, that allows development east of the F-DAB under certain circumstances, where we have infrastructure and things available, readily available to serve that project. And in this circumstance, and I'll again show the, just the kind of future land use map, you know, we're in an area that's predominantly UF3. Again, you know, when the F-DAB line was drawn, it kind of bisected this property that even at the time was under co-ownership. But regardless of that, a majority of this project is located within the F-DAB. It's going to be served by utilities. They're going to construct all the utility lines that go out there. We're constructing the roadways, such as Keene Road, that'll serve this property. And so we have that infrastructure in place, and, you know, that's the point of policy 2.1, 2.8. It's to look at those areas in the county where development makes sense, because you can utilize infrastructure that's going to be in place there, that's going to be constructed by the developer, and that's what we have here, where the developer is extending these utility lines. We have services, capacity availability, to serve this property with regards to sewer and potable water. So, you know, this is the extension of that development.
So are you saying that it's an opportunity to put customers on a line that's been extended, and the investment's already been made, that there's capacity available in the line, is that?
That's correct. You know, we have the infrastructure in place, the lines, everything, we have the capacity. And so it's doing an addition to this project into that area east of the F-DAB, where we have the availability, and the infrastructure will be in place.
And with regard, in a broader sense, this, I think we've represented that this is a portion of a larger master plan development, and the opportunity to capitalize on a larger number of units going in, the investments that can be made that support the potential residents in that area, for example, the roadway network that gets constructed, is that a direct correlation with regard to the? that a direct correlation with regard to the policy that?
Yeah, well, with the policy, you're, again, looking at those areas where we're putting in those investments in infrastructure and where the area outside the F dab can capitalize on that, utilize those infrastructure improvements and be brought in under the UF3 designation. There's still going to be paying all of your impact fees, things like that for that area, but utilizing the infrastructure improvements that are already going to be put in place with the development that is within the F dab line.
Okay. And with the graphic that's represented, what is the zoning on the blue area, the P slash SP?
So that's the public semi-public future land use category and it's ag zoning right now, but that is owned by the Florida Power and Light Company. And so that's what that area is there.
Okay. It's essentially owned by the utility?
Correct.
Okay. So regardless of the F dab that we're bumping up against a utility?
Florida Power and Light Utility.
Okay, all right.
Owned property.
Yes, Mr. Roth.
So where is the, where are the actual utilities located, the sewer and the water that this will tap off of?
So, so right now with the development, and if I could, let me grab something, just kind of get a broader aerial here. So this was that Cone Ranch property. So right now with the development of Cone Ranch, potable water and sewer lines are being extended along State Road 62. And so we will, I can have our engineer come up and discuss this specifics, but we are extending lines. Perfect. It's a little zoomed out, but these are potable water and sanitary sewer lines coming from 301 down State Road 62. A lot of these have already been put in place up to about Spencer Parish Road, and so we will be continuing to extend those to serve the Cone Ranch property, the Gagne property, as well as this Crosswind Ranch property.
And when will those be in place?
Well, they are in place up to State Road 62 right now. And then with the, you know, approvals of these projects and getting into final site plans and things like that when we do the designs and work with the county on exact location and sizing.
So when the property is constructed, basically the lines will be there?
They will have to be there. Before we get any COs or anything like that, we'll have to be connected to utilities.
One follow-up question to the explanation. Is the intent to loop it back to the north, northwest?
I'm going to bring up our engineer.
Good morning. Good question. Good morning. Jeb Mueller with ZNS Engineering. I have been sworn actually five times, I think, today. So the answer to your question, yes, the idea is the more looping, the better the system works. You know, when Keene Road is also built, it'll be utilities that are brought, be brought up that road, and then that will connect into sort of the back end east side of Cone Ranch. So it'll provide plenty of capacity and flow and so forth.
Okay, very similar to roadway, you're creating a network of?
Utilities.
Utilities, okay.
Absolutely.
And who's paying for those utilities?
The, well, the utilities, the developer will be, yeah, basically paying for all the utilities, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any additional questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Grimes, can you speak to the idea that there may be an LDA in place?
Oh, yes. So we have been working with your staff. We've met with, you know, Scott May, Clark Davis, kind of on this whole area, Cone Ranch, Gagne, and talking about different road improvements and working on that LDA. Once we kind of work out the terms, we will be bringing that forward. And that has also included coordination with FDOT as, you know, State Road 62 is a state road.
Okay. And in general terms, what's the intent of the LDA?
The intent of the LDA is so that we can kind of set the parameters of the construction of these thoroughfare roadways. We'll touch on the extension of utilities to make sure that we have all of this infrastructure in place, who's paying for it, you know, how that's going to work, if there's any impact fee credits or anything like that. So it's all encompassing of the infrastructure.
Does it speak to improvements outside the footprint of the property?
Yes, it will for any off-site improvements that may be required for, to address transportation mitigation projects, you know, to account for whatever we're putting on that road, making sure we're doing improvements, you know, for our effect on the roadway network.
So it's an opportunity for the county to formalize an agreement where the developer's going to do improvements outside of the boundary of their project that provide benefit, of course, to the project, but also the general?
Exactly. We, you know, we'll, we'll touch on, you know, some of the improvements of like Keene Road and things that are more internal, but we go beyond that. We, you know, any off-site mitigation improvements, intersection improvements, any widenings of roadways and things like that. Those are all what we work with the county on, you know, timing and things like that to make sure we're addressing the network in this area.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant or staff?
Good.
All right. With that, we're going to offer it to staff. Any closing comments? Okay, no closing comments. Applicant, any closing comments or rebuttal? All right, they're waving it off. So we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or deliberation, debate, or consideration of a motion. So what's the pleasure of the commission?
Motion.
Mr. Roth?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we know what your job today is.
I get a little torn on these with the F dab line. I think in this case, you know, it is part of a larger project. It is bumping it up to the utility. So I'm going to vote to move approval or whatever I'm supposed to move.
Well, we could be first voting on number nine.
Right, I'm doing nine.
Amendment.
All right.
Okay.
Opposed, recommended motion for adoption in these staff materials.
So we'll take them one at a time. We'll take the motion for the comp plan amendment, and then we'll do the motion for the rezon. So.
Okay. So I'll move to recommend adoption of plan amendment PA 22-07, ordinance 2323.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Roth, any discussion or deliberation?
No.
I, it does seem to be a consistent theme that it's just a little bit out, but I do understand that there is opportunity to take advantage of, again, a larger project that extends roadways, extend utilities and stuff like that. So it does seem to be a consistent theme, but I agree, in the very near future, there needs to be a more comprehensive discussion related to the F dab. And it needs to be, I think, the discussion probably will last at least two years. So with that, any other thoughts? All right. With that, we'll call the matter of the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Item number 10, is it? I'm sorry. Yeah, item number 10, the PDR 2209, Prenzy, Prenji. What's the pleasure of the commission?
A motion to approve PDR 2209.
All right, we have.
Zone.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there?
Second.
Second. Mr. Roth, any discussion? Okay, hearing, hearing nothing further. We'll call the matter of the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. And with that, we're very close to the noon hour, so we're going to go ahead and call a recess until 1:00 for lunch. So we'll reconvene at 1:00. So, thank you.
Yeah, Jonathan, just make sure, you know, this isn't working on my computer, so. Hi.
Hello. I hope I'm a breath of fresh air. We just had our semifinalist Zoom interviews on February 28th, and we narrowed a group of 11 semifinalists down to four. And I'm very proud of the public.
Having back into order. Bill Connolly is going to be recused for this next one as well.
Really? Oh, no.
So you got to deal with me again.
What number are we?
If we can go ahead and read number, number 11 in.
11?
And we'll get one on it.
Number 11.
Oh, my God.
PDMU 2217 CG, East River Ranch, East River Ranch.
Thanks for listening, by the way.
1400 LLC owner and is a quasi judicial, Dorothy Rainey, principal planner, is the case manager, and is amending the official zoning atlas ordinance 1517 as amended the Manatee County Land Development Code related to zoning within the unincorporated area provided for the reason of more or less 1,381 acres from AWPEWPMST, general agriculture watershed protection efforts, watershed protection Lake Manatee, and special treatment overlays to the PDMU retaining the overlays for a site generally located at the southwest corner of State Road 64 East and County Road 675 at 21100, State Road 64 East, Bradenton, Manatee County, and approving a general development plan, large project for up to 5,378 residential units, single-family detached, single-family semi-detached, single-family attached, and multifamily, 900,000 square feet of commercial retail uses, 300,000 square feet of office uses, 300,000 square feet of mini warehouse uses, and a future charter school grade K to 12, and a future potential fire station facility.
Okay, quasi judicials, does anyone have any ex parte communication?
No.
All right, we're all clear. Then I think we're ready for the applicant presentation.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for the record. My name is Scott Rudicil. I'm an attorney at Baylock Walters. I have been sworn, and I am here on behalf of the applicant today. Briefly introduce our project team. We have Carlos Baruff and Carol Clark here representing the property owner. We have Christie Barrero with Height Design here, who is our project planner. Alan Carson is our project engineer, also with Height Design. Christopher Hatton is our traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, and Kerry McNutt is our environmental scientist with Monarch Ecology. So as you'll recall, we were here last month with the first two pieces of this project. We had the thoroughfare amendment to the comprehensive plan related to the realignment of thoroughfares through the project, and we also had a future land use map amendment for the site to go from ag rural to the UF3 future land use category. Both of those petitions have been transmitted to the state, so at this point we're waiting for those to come back. But before I turn it over to Christie, I did want to frame a little bit, what we're looking at today is opposed to what we looked at when we were looking at the comprehensive plan amendments. The question of to pass the F dab or not to pass the F dab with this type of development, that was a question under the prior application. So that was, do we go from ag rural to UF3? This application is dependent upon that UF3 being approved, and so it assumes that the UF3 is approved for this site for the purposes of your review. So the question before the commission today is, does this particular zoning and plan conform to the UF3 designation and to the comprehensive plan generally? So with that, I'll turn it over to Christie.
Good afternoon. Christie Barrero with Height Design, planner for the project. So just wanted to start off by letting you all know that this property is 1,381 acres. It is south of State Road 64, east of Bourside Boulevard, north of 61st Avenue, and west of County Road 675. As Scott just mentioned, last month, the comp plan amendment came before you, and we are requesting UF3, and that has been transmitted to the state. Additionally, the thoroughfare plan was before you last month. That's been transmitted also. That's been transmitted also. And so today, we're here before you to discuss the zoning. Currently, the property is zoned agricultural. And we're proposing a zoning of planned development mixed use. As you can see, there are many other planned developments to the west of us, including the Taylor Ranch property that is also currently being reviewed by the state. This is a copy of our general development plan. We've colored it in so that you can see it a little bit better. We are requesting 5,378 residential units. We're also requesting 900,000 square feet of commercial, 300,000 square feet of self-storage, 300,000 square feet of office, and also a potential charter school and fire station. The pink areas are the activity nodes. These will be mixed-use areas, and they'll also be the focal points of the community. These activity nodes are situated at the intersections of the thoroughfares. The yellow area shows the mostly residential area. There can also be some non-residential in this area, but it will mainly be in the activity nodes. I also wanted to go through the specific approvals that we're requesting with this project today. The first one is to Section 401.5.8.2. We're requesting a decorative fence and landscaping in lieu of a solid wall where a three-story building is adjacent to a single-family residential. We're proposing this in a 20-foot landscaped buffer. The next specific approval we're requesting is to Section 401.5. B.4. And this is to delete the requirement for buildings that are three stories or taller to have their main entrance facing a street. We believe that this was more in the urban section of the code and does not apply to this area since we are not in an urban corridor. The third specific approval that we're requesting is to Section 1,001.1. C. We're requesting that our second means of access be an emergency access, and that's only temporary. This is a very large project, and so as we're building phases, we're requesting that there may be some instances where a second access would be emergency. We have added language to the general development plan that requires two permanent accesses by the time that this is built out. The next specific approval we're requesting is to Section 401.3. E.8. And that is requesting that the waive the requirement for the adjacent property. So if the property adjacent is zoned planned development, we're requesting only a 20-foot buffer rather than the 35-foot buffer. And then we would also have a six-foot-high fence or shrubs with 80% opacity. And the next specific approval is to 402.7. D.7. We're requesting a 15-foot front yard setback. This is for the non-garage portion of the front yard setback. So the garage portion would still be set back per the land development code. This is just to bring the other portion of the house closer to the street. And I'm also going to go over a couple of comprehensive plan items that we are consistent with. Those include objective 5.0.1, consistent with the thoroughfare system. As we discussed, there are thoroughfares. We are adjacent to State Road 64 and County Road 675. We're also planning to extend Rangeland Boulevard and 44th Street through this project and proposing a new north-south thoroughfare, East River Ranch Boulevard. We're also consistent with Section 5.2.1.2, development of framework and collector roads that are located approximately within a half mile apart. There are collector roads currently. Bourside is to the west of us. We are adjacent to County Road 675. Those are about three miles apart. But we are also proposing, as I mentioned, East River Ranch Boulevard. They will be approximately between those two. So they'll have three framework streets, north-south, about a mile and a half from each other. Additionally, we'll have the east-west framework streets of 44th Avenue extended through the project and Rangeland Boulevard. And then we get to Policy 2.1.2.8 that we've heard a lot about today. And just wanted to reiterate that we are consistent with this policy as well. This was talked a lot about last month when we were proposing the comp plan amendment change. But we do believe that we meet all of the criteria for this policy. We are adjacent to the Taylor Ranch project, which is adjacent to the F dab. And we are also proposing the UF3 land use designation, which is a suburban density designation. We are continuing a pattern of development. Again, Taylor Ranch has a similar layout and proposed uses as we do. We are also coming in as a master plan. There'll be a master plan developer, which is a requirement. And then we are providing additional roads. And utilities will also be extended to the area. And the specifics of those will come later in a local development agreement. Additionally, as I mentioned before, we're proposing the new thoroughfare. We'll also be proposing a stewardship district for this project, and that will come at a later date as well. For utilities specifically, Manatee County is required to provide utilities. And those details will again get worked out in the local development agreement and the stewardship district, which come after the zoning gets approved. There are also implementation mechanisms in Policy 2.1.2.8. We are requesting the UF3 comp plan designation. We're here before you to request a planned development zoning, which is also a requirement. And then the review and approval of a local development agreement is a requirement, and that will come next. Policy 2.1.1.3 designates areas for growth in currently undeveloped areas without creating urban sprawl. Again, we believe that we are continuing the growth that Taylor Ranch is proposing and that has been approved farther west of us. Policy 2.1.2.3 permits the consideration of new residential and non-residential development with characteristics compatible with existing development in areas which are internal to or are contiguous expansions of existing development. Again, Taylor Ranch to our west and existing development farther west than that. And we wanted to remind you, we talked about this last month, but we did have a neighborhood meeting the end of January. It was a Zoom meeting. There were 71 letters that were mailed out to parcels within 500 feet of this property. We had 59 attendees at the virtual meeting. We talked for about two hours. It was a great conversation. And as we mentioned before, the comp plan hearings were last month. The planning commission hearing was February 9th, and the board transmittal was February 16th. Additional mailings were sent out for those as well as for this hearing today. There will be one final hearing, which will be the board adoption hearing. The goal is to have all three of these amendments come before the board at one hearing. That'd be the thoroughfare plan and the future land use amendment that you all heard last month, as well as the zoning amendment that we're talking about today. That date has not been determined yet, but the public will receive mailings for that as well when that date is set. And so this time, I request that you recommend approval of the East River Ranch zoning and GDP plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, you may.
Do we know whether these are going to be multifamily or single-family?
There'll be some of both. So in the activity nodes, there is a higher density allowed. You can go up to residential nine in those pink areas that I was showing. And the yellow areas, the UF3 future land use designation allows for three units per acre. So those will mostly be single-family in that yellow area.
Do we know what the numbers are going to be specifically?
We don't know at this time. We know the number is the 5,378 units for the overall project.
And do we know whether they're going to be three feet, three stories high?
We are requesting a five-story multifamily and four-story storage. We don't know for sure what the height will be, but that's what we're requesting at this time.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to hear the staff presentation? All right. Staff?
Good afternoon. Dorothy Rainey with staff, and I have been sworn. I'll just go through the highlights and items that were not necessarily covered by the applicant on my presentation. Let's see. So this is just all the basic information that you've already heard from the applicant. The important thing is the specific approvals, they explained in detail. So I'm not going to cover those again. And then, of course, the pending requests that this is depended upon, as Mr. Rudicil mentioned. This is actually from the comprehensive plan amendment presentation showing. Oh, yes, I've been sworn. I thought I said that.
Yeah, she said that.
Okay. Anyway, there's the, oops, the main thoroughfares that are going to be established within the project boundary. The aerials of this project, you've seen. Basic information, future land use, existing zoning, the surrounding developments. I think they provided that with the applicant presentation. However, as you see, Taylor Ranch is the large project to the west that's pending approval. And then there's other assorted PDR projects further west of Taylor Ranch. And the surrounding uses, I can just quickly go over. There is a state park, Lake Manatee State Park to the north. To the south is general agriculture, large parcel residential with agriculture, Pamela Park subdivision, and Waterbury Grapefruit Tracts. To the east is general, again, large parcels residential with agriculture. And east of that, Saddlehorn Estates subdivision. And of course, to the west is the agriculture, large parcel residential with agriculture and a raceway facility, as well as the pending SMR Taylor Ranch project. You saw that. The applicant showed the areas, as they mentioned, the activity nodes or commercial nodes are in the pink color. Yellow is mainly for the residential development. And they actually also show wetlands. That's all the green, the wetlands on site. Site plan information, they've already gone through that. So really, the positives are that the proposed large project will be developed as a master plan community. So it will allow it to be designed to address compatibility between uses internal to as well as external to the project. Also, the project will provide thoroughfare roads when both 44th Avenue East and Rangeland Parkway are extended eastward into the project, as well as a new thoroughfare, the East River Ranch Boulevard, which will run north-south through the project. And of course, there'll be internal roads provided for access to all the uses to be developed within the project. The other positive is there's a variety of residential options that will be provided to supply housing choices to potential residents of the area, as well as neighborhood and community-serving, commercial, retail, and office uses. The negatives, the project is adjacent to a general agriculture zone property to the northeast and south, which has large parcel residential with agricultural uses, which may be potentially incompatible with higher-density residential development and commercial uses proposed for the project. Also, the project will be developing with higher density and intensity in a rural area of the county east of the F dab with approval of the amendment to the future land use category that's pending. Mitigating factors, the compatibility issues will be required to be addressed as the preliminary site plan, final site plan comes in for each phase in the review and approval process. The project is subject to Policy 2.1.2.8, as the applicant indicated. So to ensure that the development east of the F dab does meet all the criteria. And our conclusion is, the request appears for the PDMU rezone and the general development plan, as well as specific approvals, together with the stipulations, appear to meet the applicable policies of the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code regulations. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Question?
Sure.
When does the developer have to present the number of stories that will be in the multifamilies?
That's all indicated on the general development plan now. They need to establish all their standards and their maximums and all that and document it on the general development plan because they're being vested for all that. So we make sure that.
Do we know from that plan how high the multifamilies will be?
They, yeah, they've indicated. I don't have a copy of the general development plan, but.
Well, if somebody could just tell me. Are they going to be six stories high?
No, no, they've mentioned five stories.
So they'll be higher than the ones that are on Lockwood Ridge and Whitfield?
I don't have to pack a packet to look at what we've got in there.
While you're doing that, let me just suggest that the plan that's been developed between Taylor and the folks who are putting that area together for a raceway cluster, or whatever they want to call it, community, that's unenforceable by the county. So the builders are going to have to hope that whoever signs paperwork to buy a place there is going to be fine. And I understand that, or I think we realize that. My concern is that there's nothing going to happen until the raceway and the drag strip leave. All right, tell me about the numbers.
Okay, so, yeah, so on their general development plan, on one of their sheets, they have, all the way across the top, they have all the typical lot layouts for the various products. The single-family detached 40-foot lot or 30-foot lot, front-loaded garage, and then they have the same thing with alley-loaded. Anyway, so the various products have their own maximum stories. So for the single-family detached, maximum height, three stories. Single-family semi-detached is maximum height, three stories. Single-family attached, maximum height, three stories. And then multifamily or ALF is five stories. Office use, maximum three stories. And commercial, maximum height, two stories. And then specifically for self-storage is four stories. So they've got it all.
Yeah, we're creating our own ghetto out on the east. I got it. Before any of this can happen, of course, it will be before the county commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And these are proposals not approved by anybody as yet?
Right, not yet, no.
And the agreement between the raceway, the drag strip, and Taylor is not anything that can be enforced by the county?
No.
You don't know about that?
No, it's between the developer and the facility owners.
Right. Is there a length of time when the builder is developing that he has to get the buildings up and sold?
There's timeframes for expirations that, prior to expiration of the final site plan and their certificate of level of service, they have to have all the building permits pulled. And then there's no time limit for selling them. We don't care or have any control over that. So, yeah, it's just based on the site plan approval and the expiration, getting the building permits that were approved under that final site plan actually issued and underway.
You understand what I'm getting at, or do you? What I'm getting at is if the raceway and the drag strip stays there, and even if they build it, they could stand on their head, and they're not going to sell any. That's what concerns me. So we may be building an empty area. And I'm worried about that for the county.
I guess that's the risk that the owner and developer is taking?
Well, the owner and developer may tell us that, okay, we want to do seven to an acre. And then when we have our meeting, he'll tell us he wants to do three to an acre. And even that's terrible. I'm done. Thank you. I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
I, I believe it was, uh, brought up in the last presentation, but from the staff's perspective, the urban, the concern about urban sprawl, traveling east quickly from this point, you know, I think there's a lot of five-acre plots just to the east that would be hard for, for a developer to consolidate in. So does that put that concern to rest as far as you guys are concerned a little bit?
Well, um, yeah, we do have, uh, requirements in place to address the compatibility issues. So there may be, you know, additional setbacks away from the larger and lower-density properties that are east of it, like you said. So there, there's ways to design the community to address that and to have, provide some sort of transition. You know, for instance, we, we would look for them to do the single-family detached, which is going to be lower-density, you know, shorter, smaller buildings, whatever, closest to the five, ten-acre, you know, parcels that are east of it, so. And the other, other techniques and things, they're obviously, it looks like they're putting their commercial or non-residential development mostly in those commercial nodes, which is pretty far from the, the east property line of the, the project overall, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Are they going to be providing, um, their own water and sewer, or are we going to be?
They, um, they're, they'll be utilizing county water sewer and infrastructure, and part of that policy, two-point-one, point-two-point-eight, says that they have to develop, you know, to be co-terminus and contiguous to development that's west of them. So as S M R Taylor Ranch comes online, they're going to extend all the infrastructure, and, and it'll be to their east property line available for connection by East River Ranch's projects, so. So, yeah, they'll, they'll be using county, county facilities, county, um, utilities and everything.
Can we don't see a burden with that and to, to our, our own natural resources?
As Mr. John Osborne kind of mentioned earlier today, um, with his project, the Ry, Ry Road Residential, um, you know, the, the county has a mechanism and looks at the, the comp plan, uh, comp plan, as well as the Land Development Code and, and all the county standards, and, and they address that sort of thing for, you know, expansion of their facilities to accommodate development. And I believe that sometimes the developer participates in, in the cost of all that, so.
Thank you. Any more questions? Um, we'll go ahead and open up to public comments and questions.
Hello, my name is Stacy Jesse, I've been sworn in, and I live in Manatee County. The problem with quasi-judicial hearings for a citizen is we don't have the opportunity to cross-examine. So it's kind of nice being here today, because after I made comments about the utility service area and couldn't say anything, now it's brought up again. Um, and so one of the things that I had asked was capacity, right? The burden that we're placing on our utilities. And we can argue, I think rightly so, thirty acres, right, Cone Ranch and stuff aren't big, but this is a massive project. And the question that I've continued to ask the county and haven't gotten an answer on is, are there studies? Can we handle this? And it was implied earlier that we could. But if you go back and look, I'm not a land use lawyer, I'm not a county planner, but I'm an excellent researcher, and I'm really good at making my kids miserable. Um, and this, and a lot of you were here, Gamble Creek Village back in twenty-twenty-one. It went back and forth for a while, it's passed the F D A B. Let me read you the staff report. That, it says, "The potable water and sanitary sewer service area is where the majority of growth is occurring in the county. Planning for growth and associated infrastructure and services occurs countywide. There are efficiencies with county infrastructure and services within this area when planning for roads, water, sewer, public safety, solid waste collection, public transit schools, et cetera, and other services. Development beyond the existing utility service area would compete for capital improvement program funds that are needed to address existing deficiencies elsewhere in the county. Concentrating growth, infrastructure, and services within the potable water and sanitary sewer service area helps to ensure that capital expenditures, maintenance, operations, and revenues are planned to support growth, which occurs in a predictable and cost-effective manner. It is critical for local governments that growth occurs within more concentrated areas that already have or are planned for schools, fire E M S stations, libraries, utilities, social services, and other services to maximize efficiency for residents and provide taxpayers with greater return on investment. That land development application is in conflict with this approach and attempts to add development outside the area the county can serve in a cost-efficient manner." It's, that was two years ago, and I've seen no indication, no studies that show that that analysis has changed. And so my question remains, can we accommodate Taylor Ranch and East River Ranch? And aren't we getting the cart before the horse? Taylor Ranch is still pending, two-point-one, point-two-point-eight, we all agree, says co-terminus and contiguous with an approved property. Taylor Ranch is not approved. Taylor Ranch is finished to transmittal, but it has not been approved, nor has the future land use comp amendment for this project, which is where we have a lot of concurrency issues with transportation and utilities that still need to be worked out before we can even talk about rezoning. The other comprehensive plan issue that has been addressed is policy five-point-three, point-two-point-four, that says new major roads should not be in the watershed. East, uh, River Ranch is in the watershed, and we're not talking about it. Again, this is a major concurrency issue that needs to be resolved at the comp plan, plan stage, in my mind, again, you know, before we get to the rezon. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Carla Tralick. I am a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn in. I have concerns, because if I look at the plans right, where Taylor Ranch is and my property is, they want to put a road through my property. Now, I feel if you bought the property, you need to put your road on your side, not on my side. And then when letters come out, they don't come out to us right away. I just got a letter last week for February ninth, which was dated on the envelope, February twenty-third. So, yes, they do send out letters, but they do not come to us right away. And fencing, well, I could tell you, I've been through Ian, and I've been through, um, Irma. Fencing isn't going to work out there, because those winds, those, I have wooden fence all around my property. It always comes down when there's a hurricane. I have horses, I have a lot of wild animals. I mean, I, I do have the bald eagles, I have the woodpeckers, I have everything out there, because, like I said, I have the twenty, twenty acres there. The road looks like it's going to come through me, and I do not want that road to come through my property. I've been out there thirty years. And I felt I was safe, because we had to park across the street. Now, it's, it's, I'm not, I don't think I'm safe no more. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Hello, Carol Phelps, uh, Mayaka City, I haven't been sworn, because I just got here.
If there's anyone else in the, in the chambers who'd like to speak before the board today, please stand.
Can you give her a permit?
Red hand, please swear in accordance with actual statements and representations you are about to make to the planning commissioners, are truthful and accurate.
I do, thank you. Thank you. Once again, we are, um, becoming very involved citizens with what's going on in East Manatee County. Unfortunately, um, we do have people out there who are working their land, they're working their jobs. It's very difficult for them to come down to a meeting and to even understand some of the things that have been proposed. What we've been trying to do since day one, with an acceptance that there's going to be growth in Manatee County, with opportunities actually for ourselves with growth in Manatee County, is to work with our county, to work with our county commissioners, to work with our planning commissioners, and to work with the owners of the land. Because you're never going to find too many people that are more adamant about landowners' rights than those people out there that own land ourselves. This area that we're talking about cannot be looked at in a myopic basis. And I think that, um, we have that on both hands. On one hand, we're looking at things in a myopic basis with, it's just Palm Grove, it's just Taylor Ranch, it's just East River. But we're dealing with an extremely vulnerable area. This is right up next to our state park. Our state parks need a buffer around them. The animals that we protect in a state park don't know how to read signs. And we have so much evidence of that wildlife that we're sharing our yards and our acreage and our things with out there. And all we'd like to do is have a vision to be part of our community, for everyone to be part of that community. And there's some differences that have to be addressed in a rural area that you do not have in other districts of the county. For instance, um, signage, um, most of the signage for this meeting, for any other meetings, it's this big, and we're going down those roads at seventy miles an hour. Our signs don't even tell us anything about what the subject matter is, just that there's a public hearing, and we have to pull off on the side of the road, scan it, and then be able to look at it, it really doesn't work. So that's what happens, is a lot of cynicism, a lot of distrust, a lot of wariness could definitely be combated with education and information and involvement. And that's what we've asked for, um, from, from day one. We don't measure our communities out there in city blocks or in a number of feet. So having a notice that, um, goes out to people whose property merely abuts another property or is five hundred feet from another property is definitely not sufficient in a rural area. And we've been begging for strategies to come up with that. So we appreciate being here, because it's very educational to us. We would like to make sure that our input is valued as well, and that we're not anti-anything. We just like to have an opportunity to all work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to comment on that, or shall I?
We've got to get through public comments completely. Are there any more comments from the public? Then we're going to go ahead and close public comments on this issue. And, um, Board of County Commissioners, we have questions for the applicant.
Well, the applicant can't answer this question. Nobody, it's a piece of advice.
Go ahead.
I would think if Director Conley would hear, he would tell you what I'm going to tell you, because this is what I learned when I became a planning board member. Our job is to look at the nineteen-ninety land use code and see if what we're doing fits. And if it does, we vote positive or negative. Let me get directly to my instruction to the people who are concerned about this, because it's the same concerns I have. The first one is the signing of five-inch or three-by-five letters. The second is the business about moving beyond the F D A B. Those concerns are my concerns, but I can't answer those questions for you, because that's not within my jurisdiction. This is going to go to the county commissioners. If you want that changed, get your community off their backsides and get them at the meeting. Take them away from their work, take them away from whatever they're doing, but unless you get there and be heard, you will not be heard. I've gone through this myself in New Hampshire, and I had to go to the Supreme Court of New Hampshire to get my land sold. That's ridiculous. That's my advice, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, thank you. So we have, and do we have any questions for the applicant, though? Staff or citizens, so, can, um, you want to address any of the issues from, from the public hearing? At all? Advocate, sorry.
Apologize.
And we have an issue with a roadway going through a private citizen's property and, um,
Yeah, we can.
Things that we'd like, we'd really like to have looked at.
Sure, uh, and we can, we can touch on all those. So let me just kind of work my way through the comments. First of all, I want to, I want to start with Commissioner Ross's comments about the ability to, to sell homes in this area. One thing, first of all, this is, this is a developer that knows how to build communities and, and sells homes, he's very aware that the racetrack is there.
Right?
One thing that's different about this project is that it does have commercial components in it. So there's the potential to do commercial, to do, you know, self-storage, office-type uses that could go around the racetrack and might provide a buffer there from the residential, which is something, obviously, in Taylor Ranch, they had to come up with, with other ways to try to, to address that issue. As far as the, as far as the connection, capacity, utilities, those sorts of questions, there is a, first of all, we've had, we've, we've coordinated with Taylor Ranch on the, on the upsizing of the lines. We've been in coordination with your Public Works Department. We believe that there is capacity, um, within the existing plant to accommodate this development. But the point of the L D A and the provisions of two-point-one, point-two-point-eight say that if there's not, it's on the developer to make sure that there is. And so that's something that we would have to address as part of that local development agreement, to make sure that if there is any impact on the ability to provide services to that area, that, that it would be addressed. And so that is something that would, would come back in an L D A. There were comments about Gamble Creek, uh, that was a project that I had some involvement with, as did Ms. Clark. Totally different scenario with Gamble Creek, because they were not proposing to connect to county water and sewer. They were proposing to have their own independent water and sewer facilities out in that location. And so that was, that was one of the major concerns that, that county staff had with that project. This one is required to connect to the county, um, water and sewer system. And so let me talk briefly about our. Yeah, let's talk about the pinch, the pinch point, if we can pull up the. So, this is the area that we're talking about, right up in here. There is, there is a gap of right-of-way in that area, which we're estimating may be about forty feet wide or something like that. So, yes, in order to put a thoroughfare through in that area, there will be additional right-of-way that will be required. We don't know at this time, we don't have final design, so we don't know exactly where that right-of-way will come from. This developer is going to have to work with the county in order to make that happen. The one thing I will say is that, in terms of potential impacts and putting in a thoroughfare, this is a very minimal impact compared to what it would take to come into an area, like to the south of this project, where you have all five and ten-acre parcels with single-family homes on them and trying to, to put a thoroughfare through there. So, um, obviously, we're going to work with the county to minimize those impacts. We're going to be required to, to buffer on the perimeter of our project like we would in any other areas. But, yes, that is something that we will have to work through, and, and it will have to be addressed in order to complete the project. That connection will have to be made, so. Yeah, that's where the right-of-way comes from, right? It's the, this area is the old Waterbury Grapefruit Tracts, it's large, ten-acre tracts, and it has right-of-way, and that's where the right-of-way comes from, where we do have room there in that, in that pinch point, so. Other than that, I think, I think we've touched on kind of everything that was raised. We do think this project is consistent with your U F three, uh, future land use designation, and we're respectfully requesting your recommendation of approval.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I, I think, I'm not sure it addresses this, it isn't concerned about the utilities, and then between you and maybe our staff. So regardless of who's paying for it, normally it would be the developer if we have challenges with utilities, water, sewage. So what would those challenges look like if, you know, if there's something like this, we've got Taylor Ranch and you guys coming in? What would that look like, is it, is it a big thing, or?
Well, if it were a plant capacity issue, I mean, that, that would be a, a fairly significant hurdle, we'd have to work through that. We don't expect that to be the case.
So we don't expect the plant?
Right.
Staff?
They don't know.
Anybody know?
Yeah, I can answer that. So until they.
So until they submit their calculations, we're not going to make, be able to do our final calculations. And that's when that would be addressed at that time. So we have done some preliminary estimates on water and what size water mains might be needed out there. And I do know that we've been talking about the plant, but I don't know that there's been a final determination yet.
So again, if there was a capacity issue there, that would be on us to fix.
Can I ask you, so you would be providing the infrastructure, but who would maintain it once it's built down the road? Would that be a county, county having to maintain?
Typically, the county would accept the conveyance of your water mains, your sewer mains and things like that, yes.
So you provide it, but the county maintains it forever going forward?
That would be my expectation, yes.
Okay, thanks.
This is Denise for staff, Denise Greer for staff. It depends on how it's designed and built. It would have to be built in accordance with our standards and we would have to have an agreement to take that over. But typically, in subdivisions, we do take those utilities over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I do want to put this down just as a last, just as a reminder of kind of what, where this area is in context and why we're here as just as a reminder. This area is built out. And if you look down at the concession and Panther Ridge further to the south, I mean, this area is essentially longitudinally, it is in line with those communities, so. And the areas between, like I said, are five and 10-acre parcels with single-family homes predominantly, platted lots, so.
The only difference here, Scott, is that Taylor Ranch is going to be multi-homes, single-family or multi-family. What you just named as far as longitudinally, those are 10-acre or more lots. Different.
What's that?
The property that you named, what did you call it? The one that's longitudinally, north or south? That property is not one house after the other. They're big lots, 10 square, 10 acres and more each one.
Well, I think concession is one-acre lots.
This is, yeah.
No, concession is one-acre lots. This...
Which is just further south?
Yeah, that's a different property.
This project here directly to our east, this is a subdivision, one-acre lots. So it's not all, you know, five and 10 acres. Thank you.
All right. Miss, staff closing comments? Anything, any questions for the staff beyond this?
I'm good.
All right. And then we have our applicant rebuttal. If you have anything, anything else you may want to say? Okay. Then I'm open for deliberations, discussions, and the possibility of a motion.
I'm not going to make a motion. I'm just going to say there's, Comprehensive Plan has policy to avoid suburbanization east of the FDAB line. I realize there are exceptions to that. I think in this case, and I voted against the land use amendment last month, but I think this, this project in its size and density runs counter to the policy of suburbanization of the rural lands to the east of the FDAB land, even though there are exceptions in place. I just don't think, I think they're counter to each other. So I would vote against this, but I'm not going to make the motion.
Thing is, Taylor Ranch has to be approved first anyway, right?
Yeah, for this to go forward, yeah.
A motion to approve number 11 PDMU-22-17.
We have a motion, and then we need a second. We have to have a second before we, for discussion.
I can make a second, even, I can second it, I'll second it.
Right. Yeah, I agree, there's, we're getting into a gray area of growth and responsibility. Being a lifelong resident of this town, I've been born here, watching it grow, thinking when the interstate came through that, why would anybody drive way out there to get on that road? It was, it was just a bizarre thought and growth came. And we've done a fairly good job of maintaining that growth. Now, we can debate till this, you know, it gets dark outside as to whether we're keeping up with roads and schools as fast as the developers are developing. This has a lot of great potential. The activity nodes can help reduce that traffic that we're dealing with or we potentially be looking at in future growth. And I would, I would encourage, just seeing where this is going to go, you're still greatly responsible in the county commission accepting this and moving it forward. And however it goes through today, it's going to go to the county commission regardless, whether it's going to be recommended by us or not. So again, like Mr. Ross said, is get your neighbors out for the county commission meeting and have that discussion. So I'd like to call a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
Chair votes aye. So two-two?
Two-two.
So, so the motion fails two-two, so there's no recommendation?
No recommendation.
On going forward?
All right. Then that would put this one to rest. As happily as I am to see this go to rest.
Oh my God, this, Dr. Connolly.
You can have that back.
Thank you. All right. All right, we're going to move on to item number 12, I believe. Is that correct?
13?
Yes.
No, 12.
Item number 12.
Yes, ma'am.
PA 2217, ordinance 2322, and ordinance 2336 through 2347, Community Rating System Class 4, County Initiated Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. It's a legislative case and the case manager is Mr. Charles Andrews, that is principal planner. Nisa County Initiated Large-Scale Map Amendment to the future map use of the future land use element to designate a specific real property generally located throughout the county from the conservation, recreational, and open space, agriculture, rural, residential 1, residential 3, urban fringe 3, residential 6, residential 9, residential 16, retail office residential, industrial light, industrial heavy, mixed-use, mixed-use community residential, mixed-use activity center level 1, and public semi-public 1. Future land use classification to the conservation and recreational open space and public semi-public future land use classifications on properties throughout the county and is more or less 14,014.86 acres.
Very good, thank you. And this, again, is a legislative matter, so ex parte is not a concern. So Mr. Andrews, if you could, please introduce the application.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Charles Andrews, Principal Planner, Certified Planner with staff. I don't need to be sworn, so if I can get the PowerPoint up, I certainly appreciate it.
Does this go with the next one, the next item?
No, I think they're separate. Ms. Schenk, each one has to be heard separately.
Yes, separate.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so this is regarding a county-initiated large-scale map amendment. It's a Community Rating System Class 4. Like I said, this is regarding a large-scale map amendment. This has multiple future land use classifications, as my colleague Ms. Leiter had alluded to there, and these are going to con, conservation, rec-open space, and PSP 1 or public semi-public 1. The overview here, this is a plan amendment. It's being requested in an effort to achieve the community Class 4 rating system through the community rating system established under the NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program by FEMA. Through the CRS, the county receives points by amending the future land use classification of property located within the 100-year floodplain to a designation which would limit its development potential such as conservation or recreation open space. By reaching a Class 4 designation, Mandy County would, Mandy County residents would receive, would see an increase in the discount offered to their flood insurance premiums by 5%, resulting in a total reduction of 30%. So I have a graphic here from the FEMA website showing the classification there of the Class 4 and the 30% reduction is what we're trying to go for on this. A little more on the overview. So as of October 2022, there's 264 local jurisdictions in the state of Florida that are currently participating in the CRS program. Of these jurisdictions, less than 2% or five communities have achieved a CRS class ranking of four or better. I have a graph here showing just the breakdown of what I just mentioned there regarding the classification of communities and the vast majority fall in a range of anywhere from seven down to about six. Let's see here, kind of hard to see that. But so what we're trying to go for is that Class 4, which is outlined in that red box. Presently, the county holds a Class 5 rating, which is a total reduction of 25%. And that was achieved under County Initiated Large-Scale Comp Plan Amendment, PA 0902. I have an article there just discussing that, how FEMA has recognized the county achieving a Class 5 designation, and that was back in 2011. A proposed map amendment seeks to change the future land use category on 213 properties encompassing over, just over 14,000 acres. Properties owned by public and nonprofit entities are what we're looking at here. Mandy County-owned property, fire districts, et cetera, swift mud, for example. Uses on the subject properties include, but aren't limited to, parks and preserves, fire stations, libraries, stormwater facilities, lift stations, potable water, infrastructure, et cetera. Positive aspects: Request has the potential to improve the county CRS established under the NFIP to a Class 4, giving you that additional 5% for a 30% in total reduction for flood insurance premiums. Request would take residential entitlements out of the 100-year floodplain, thereby reducing potential damage and increasing public safety by removing development potential out of these flood-prone areas, i.e., 100-year floodplain. The real classification of the subject properties will more accurately reflect their current and future uses, thereby increasing the accuracy of the future land use map series that's established in the Comprehensive Plan. Right now, we don't have any negative aspects. Mitigating aspects or factors: Future rezonings may occur to ensure consistency of the current existing uses between the future land use classifications and the zoning districts of the applicable properties. Conclusion: The request appears to meet the applicable policies of the Mandy County Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code regulations. And the request is for transmittal of Plan Amendment PA 2217, Ordinance 2322, and Ordinance 2336 through 2347. And I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Very good, very good, thank you. How does, how does this take residential properties out of the 100-year flood? It, as you indicated, these are currently either publicly held or...
Publicly owned, yes, sir.
Publicly owned or, I guess, maybe institutional, I don't remember.
Institutional uses, yes, sir. So what this would do is you'd have a property that has a future land use classification of RES 3. So by taking that and acknowledging it as a rec-open space for a park, so an existing facility such as Emerson Point or Robinson Preserve or something along those lines, you're taking that potential...
Okay, it's not residential units.
It's not, it's not a taking.
Potential residential, okay, all right.
It's a consistency finding more of making it consistent with our future land use. So if it's a preserve, we're making it a preserve through conservation.
All right, thank you. And is there any additional effort that's going to be required? For example, with, with the modification to the maps, are we then going to be required to provide updated analysis, floodplain, 100-year floodplain analysis?
Sure, so in our, in our reach-out efforts with this map amendment with other departments, we would have the floodplain folks, they do mapping of basins and whatnot, and they have, there's some other efforts that can go forward or activities that we get points for, such as having publications regarding the community rating system in addition to changing the comp plan, the future land use classifications on properties, so we can get those extra points. And we get, I believe, reviewed by FEMA every three years and talking with our floodplain coordinator. So they'll take a look at that and we can hopefully get to, from a Class 5 to a 4. And the next audit review is 2024.
Okay. And also, is there, with this action, is there an opportunity to provide compensation related to this? Floodplain compensation. Ms. Greer, that might be something you have an opinion on.
Can you state that again?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I just...
What are you trying to say?
No, I'm asking you...
Trying to spend money on raising the park elevation?
No, no, you don't get compensation by raising land.
Well, I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, is there, yeah. Is there an opportunity to provide compensation in these areas?
In which areas, though?
The areas that are going to be identified as...
I don't understand what you mean. Explain again what you mean.
So...
You want developers to use our property?
No, no. So compensation is digging holes for floodwater to go in outside. If there's an existing area that currently floods, you can provide compensation by providing storage...
Still doing changes, correct, Charlie?
Right, yes.
We're not doing any physical change to any of these properties.
No, I'm... My question is, is there an opportunity to provide, for the county to provide future floodplain compensation in these areas?
Like a mitigation bank?
Essentially, a floodplain mitigation bank. So we're talking about some larger areas, right?
We haven't made, this is a plan and level decision. Now that's been determined.
The calculations would have to be put in place when they did like their watershed model to determine if that was possible.
Right, you understand what I'm asking about?
I do now understand, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't think there's been any discussions of that, per se, but...
But you see the potential value?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, all right.
I have one question for Charlie.
Yes, ma'am.
So I didn't have opportunity to read all these emails. So I understand you reached out to the property owners to let them know what the plan was for their property and can I say they haven't objected, or?
No one has objected, that is correct, Ms. Schenk, that everyone is in agreement, it's part of the packet that was routed here to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're welcome.
All right, any additional questions for Mr. Andrews? Okay, thank you. We're going to open it up for public comment and see what folks in the audience would like to see. So again, with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Again, this is legislative, so there's really not a requirement to be sworn in. So anybody in the audience, anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment and ask the Planning Commission, is there any additional information needed? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, Mr. Andrews, any closing comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, all right. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and the chair will open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration of a motion.
Move to approve?
All right, Mr. Smock, motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve the transmittal of PA 22-17, ordinance number 2322, and ordinance number 23 through 36 through 2347, Community Rating Systems Class 4, County Initiated Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, PLN 2209-0015.
That's enough.
Is that enough? Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, oop, go ahead.
Mr. Gonzalez, second, okay. I think there's a button to hit for that. Sure, yes, please, all right. And with that, I'll call the motion to vote. All those in favor, please vote. And I'll also do a voice call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not him either.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes 5-0, thank you. All right, item number... Item number-
13?
13. Yes, ma'am. Could you please read item 13 into the record?
PA 2219, Ordinance 2324, and Ordinance 2349 to 2358, General Cleanup County Initiated Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. It's a legislative, and Mr. Charles Andrews, Principal Planner, is the case manager. Amending the Mandy County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a county-initiated large-scale map amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element to designate specific real property generally located throughout the county from the Conservation, ROS, Recreational Open Space, Agri-Cultural Rural, RES 1, Residential 1, Residential 3, RES 2, Residential 3, UF 3, Urban French 3, Residential 6, RS 6, RS 9, Residential 9, RES 16, Residential 16, OL, Low-Intensity Office, ROR, Retail Office, Retail, IL, Industrial Light, IH, Industrial Heavy, MU, Mixed Use, MUCR, Mixed Use Community Residential, MU CAC1, Mixed Use Activity Center Level 1, and PSP1, Public Semi-Public 1, Future Land Use Classifications to the CON, Conservation, ROS, Recreation Open Space, PSP1, Public Semi-Public 1, and PSP2, Public Semi-Public 2, Future Land Use Classification, and is 14,650 acres.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Andrews, if you could, please introduce the application.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Charles Andrews, Principal Planner, Certified Planner with staff. And I'll have the PowerPoint here in a minute if it's possible. Maybe the other one, right? I think it's the other one, Jenny. So today, this is the, the General Cleanup Comp Plan Map Amendment. Essentially, this is the one for all the properties throughout the county that are outside the 100-year. So in staff's review of things, these were just some remainder properties, a number of them, that we have been just kind of looking at and wanting to clean up as all one whole thing here, to kind of have, and have a separate amendment for properties outside the 100-year. So this is going from multiple future land use classifications to conservation, rec open space, public semi-public 1, and public semi-public 2. Overview: Plan Amendment, like I was saying, is proposed in an effort to provide general cleanup, updating the county's future land use map to acknowledge existing publicly-owned uses and facilities which are located outside the 100-year floodplain. Proposed map amendment seeks to change the future land use category on 229 properties encompassing just over 14,650 acres. Properties are owned by public and non-public, nonpublic, nonprofits, excuse me, entities. Once again, county, Mandy County, the state, fire district, Swift Mud, those kind of things. Uses on the properties, once again, they would include parks, preserves, fire stations, libraries, stormwater facilities, and related infrastructure. Positive aspects: Reclassification of subject properties will more accurately, more accurately reflect the current and future uses, thereby improving the accuracy of the future land use map series under Element 2 of the comprehensive plan. There are no negative aspects. Mitigating: Future rezonings may occur to ensure consistency of current and existing uses between the future land use classifications and the zoning districts of the applicable properties. Conclusion: The request appears to meet the applicable policies of the Mandy County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code regulations, and the request is for transmittal of Plan Amendment PA-22-19, Ordinance 23-24, and Ordinance 23-49 through 23-58. I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. Any questions for staff? I think this is just same thing outside.
Once again, Charlie, I see the number of emails in here. So all the ANDIs have been notified?
Yes, ma'am.
And you see no objections?
No objections.
All right. All right. No questions for staff, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion. And again, if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Anything for staff? Okay, we'll close the public, I'm sorry, the public hearing, and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration of a motion. All right. Anyone?
Motion to approve PA-22-19.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Roth. We'll go ahead and take the vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. And we have the next item, item number 14. All right, is that where we are?
Yep.
14.
Yes. LDCT 2303, Ordinance 2308, County Initiated Land Development Code Text Amendment, Establishes the Recreation Open Space R/OS Zoning District. It's a legislative case. Mr. Charles Andrews is the case manager, and is amending the Mandy County Land Development Code, amending the Land Development Code Chapter 2 definitions, Chapter 4 zoning, Chapter 5 standard for accessory and specific uses and structures to establish the Recreation slash Open Space R/OS Zoning District.
All right. Thank you. Again, this is legislative, so no concerns with regard to ex parte. So, Mr. Andrews, if you could, please introduce the application.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Charles Andrews, Principal Planner, Certified Planner with staff. And this is regarding the Recreation Open Space Zoning District. Some background: Proposed County Initiated Land Development Code Text Amendment is to establish the Recreation Open Space Zoning District, it's ROS, Zoning District, within the Land Development Code. Since the establishment of the county's comprehensive plan under Ordinance 89-01, a future land use category for Recreation Open Space, ROS, was included and sought to identify major recreation and permanent open space lands for the preservation of cultural and recreation amenities in the county. However, when the Land Development Code was updated to recognize the adoption of the comp plan under Ordinance 90-01, zoning district for Recreation Open Space was never established under the standings, under the standard zoning district section of the LDC to address these types of uses within the county. The proposed County Initiated Land Development Code Amendment seeks to address the current disconnect between the comprehensive plan and the LDC regarding the Recreation Open Space-related uses and facilities. So there's a graphic here of the comprehensive plan showing the conservation and then the Land Development Code, which has the conservation zoning district. So as you can see, the comp plan and the Land Development Code both have a conservation designation or district. Fast forward here to the Land Development Code, the comprehensive plan has established a recreation or a major recreation open space category, but we do not have a zoning district to acknowledge this. The proposed LDC text amendment is not requesting to rezone any property, but rather just to establish a new zoning district for these types of uses and facilities. Any rezoning application related to the establishment of this zoning district would be processed through a separate application or request. See, the overview of the changes regarding this LDCT is for Chapter 2 on definitions. A few things in here on abbreviations and acronyms, kind of go through this pretty quickly. Chapter 4, under zoning, it establishes grammatical corrections and reordering to acknowledge the Recreation Open Space Zoning District. Chapter 4 continued establishes under 401.1 for the Recreation Open Space to provide language for the purpose of the district. Section 401 here, standard zoning districts established under 401.2, it adds the Recreation Open Space Zoning District to the schedule of uses. Chapter 5, for standards of accessory, for accessory and specific uses and structures, discusses anywhere where there'd be Recreation Open Space, it actually defines, now it just says ROS. So basically, it's a cleanup to acknowledge the Recreation Open Space Zoning District. Also regarding personal wireless service facilities, other sections of Chapter 5 here, just to acknowledge public, public recreation facilities and related uses. So conclusion, the request is consistent with the county comprehensive plan and in accordance with the Land Development Code. The request is for transmittal of Land Development Code Text Amendment LDCT-2303 to establish the Recreation Open Space Zoning District.
Actually, Charlie, it's actually-
Yes, ma'am.
Adoption.
I'm sorry, recommended adoption. Thank you.
LDC level, yeah.
Recommended adoption for LDCT-2303. I'm here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any properties currently that exist with the zoning designation?
No, because we would be establishing a new zoning district under that. Yeah. The comprehensive plan has rec open space, but not the Land Development Code or the zoning map.
Okay. All right. And I think that's really the only question I had, so it's a new zoning district, so. All right. Any questions for, for staff?
No.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application?
Hi, my name is Stacy Jesse. I live in Mandy County, and I figured I'd speak one last time before we're done. You know, listening to these, as someone who doesn't do this on a regular basis, I kind of got the cleanup for the other two, but this one, it kind of leaves me wondering, what's the impetus for this? Why, why now do we add this to the LDC? I know that Mr. Connerly asked if there is something existing that would get this designation, but I guess my question would be, is there something in the pipeline that would give, get this designation? And I would love to know an example of a property that would meet the designation. And just, you know, it's hard. We're told, show up in, you know, large capacities to fight things, but if you looked at the Taylor Ranch hearing or the East River Ranch, we filled this. We had overflow rooms, and it hasn't been enough. So I, you know, I appreciate what you all are doing here and taking us seriously, but it is really hard as citizens to, to have a say and be actually heard in what's going on. So I really appreciate you listening today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Phelps, Myacca, again. If there's any place that's about open spaces and recreation and needing some sort of protective zoning, I think we know that that's our rural areas out there. However, we're kind of, as Mr. Palmer used to say to me, we've been down this road before. There's always an motivation for things. We don't usually just pop up with some nice, warm, fuzzy idea. So I guess a question that the applicant or our board here could answer. What would be included under recreation or open space? Because we are anticipating some developments southeast that this zoning may be crafted specifically for. So we would like to have some discussion on what the reasoning for this and what type of facilities and planning we would look at under this type of zoning. And pretty much, is it something maybe that our area could take advantage of in dealing with growth out there, that we do need recreation and open spaces? And also, too, back up again what my neighbor and friend said, we had 15,000 viewers on YouTube watching the meeting with the B.O.C.C. We try and get people to come to our meetings, but asking them to forego their salaries, to have to disrupt their lives when what we're doing is, we have elected representatives. And also, we have elected representative who has selected you sitting up on that planning commission board. We understand your legalities that you're basing your decisions on. We understand that the B.O.C.C. has the final say, but a lot of times, we're here to get an education. We appreciate that from you. And we're doing our best to be involved and inform citizens, but it's become harder and harder for us to do that because every time that we do, and there is absolutely no response or no consideration for the number of people that we do get to show up, that we do get petitions, that we do all of these things that we're told to do, the bottom line does come to our representatives voting and representing us. And there's a lot of things that we're really appreciating that our planning commission is doing to educate and inform and encourage us, and we're going to try and do our part, too. But we've done it, so we kind of need a little bit more communication, information to be effective. And in a case like this, sounds like a great idea. We just want to know, why did we come up with it now, and what's the purpose? Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? All right. Seeing no one else come forward, Mr. Andrews, could you-
Yes, sir.
-speak of the impetus for this new zoning district?
Absolutely. So, so one of these items here, I'll put it on the doc cam, and this is regarding the purpose of the Recreation Open Space. We can, we can zoom in just a little bit on the underlying language. I'd appreciate it. There we go. Thank you. So the purpose of the Recreation Open Space Zoning District is to recognize areas with significant recreation and permanent open space lands, historic sites and other areas for the preservation of cultural and recreational amenities. So what exactly does that mean? So even though, for example, like this property would be in the city, like Bradenton, for example, like GT Bray, something where you have active recreation uses, Pride Park, you know, some of these other areas in the county that are just parks, they're, you know, preserves are more for the conservation zoning district, recreation is more for just acknowledging those open spaces through parks and, and whatnot. So an example, like I said, would be Pride Park. It's all, I have a number of facilities here that are outlined in the staff report. So that's really the, the impetus behind this. And I guess, dare I say, maybe it was an oversight, maybe back in 1990, I really, I wasn't on staff, went in 1990, so to speak to that, I really couldn't, but to see that there's a connection between conservation and the comp plan and in the Land Development Code, but not in the Recreation Open Space, it was a thought in the comp plan, but then when they went from the 81 to the 90 Land Development Code, that wasn't part of that. So I don't really know why it wasn't part of that, but it's, it's just a, just a way to provide consistency.
With, with regard to the possible uses, is there a matrix that's been drafted that shows the possible uses?
So in the permitted use table, we have, that's part of the packet here, we have, a lot of it kind of mirrors what the conservation district is, but there's a section in there that talks about recreation, talks about high intensity, medium intensity, low intensity, rural, those kind of things. And that's where you'll see the difference between the conservation, recreation, open space, zoning district. So it kind of speaks to those specific uses that we're looking at for this, which is under 401.2 in your packet there for the proposed changes.
Okay. And like, just picking one use, for example, is residential an allowed use, whether primary or secondary?
It would not, because it's outside the intent of the Recreation Open Space. So for the, on the zoning side of things, if you're looking for residential, it could be an RSF or a PD or something like that that would speak to that use.
Yeah. So for example, again, you mentioned parks and things like that.
Correct.
So those, those facilities currently have a zoning designation. Is the intent to then take action and rezone those, or is it-
So as one of the mitigating factors under this, Chairman, this would be something that staff would look at to make it consistent. So anywhere where you would see, the idea maybe behind all this is that ultimately, you'd have the future land use map and the zoning map match each other. So conservation for Emerson Point would be conservation for, you know, on the zoning side of things, or Pride Park would be, you know, it would change from like an RSF or whatever it may be to Recreation Open Space to acknowledge that and to provide consistency and accuracy on these maps.
Okay. And is it generally the intent that the, the, the open space component of it, that these are areas that are to remain open space, non-developed or undeveloped, that not, not, underutilized or not utilized, but the intent is to be something more passive?
More, more like a passive recreation, or maybe, actually, let me, let me step back a little bit. So more of an active recreation, passive recreation, like hiking or something like that, you know, Blueways, you know, trails, that kind of stuff would be conservation. This would be more of, maybe you have some sports fields or some playground equipment where you're actively involved with things, that would be the rec open space. And in the permitted use table, we've got a few- the permitted use table, we've got a few things here that talk about some examples. So environmental educational facilities, for example, would be an example for recreation open space.
Okay, all right. No, I appreciate the dialogue. I just, it is a new use, and I know there might be some concern that it is intended for something else. I've seen nothing that.
It's really just matching up what the future land use map is to the zoning, and we don't have a way to do that through the zoning.
I'm sorry. So generally, when a larger project, like an area that has wetlands on it is rezoned, there's a requirement that there's a conservation easement placed on the property in perpetuity for certain things. Like if there's an open space requirement, it's, the intent is to have it open space in perpetuity for the property. So the application or the zoning is consistent. Are these intended to be in perpetuity? If you put something in an open space zoning, is the intent that that's in perpetuity, I guess, until it's rezoned, that would take required board action?
That would be the intent behind this. I mean, it doesn't preclude the county from selling a park or something down the road to change future land use and the zoning, but that is the aim, that is the intent of the zoning district.
So it's not a restriction, it's more a demonstration or intent of use?
It's more of an acknowledgement of the existing use.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right.
Is there, does the county have a parks recreation open space plan?
They do, and I don't have it on me, but I believe they do. I don't know what the requirement is. Every five years, they update, but they do have a master plan that speaks to parks and recreation facilities. So we've worked very closely with those folks regarding their input on the previous two map amendments, making sure facilities are identified, and then this kind of helps bridge that disconnect as I was talking about in the presentation.
So it's part of the comprehensive plan, but it's the park recreation open space element?
Oh, there is, yes, there is an element in the comprehensive plan that speaks to parks and recreation facilities, and I think it's, I don't, I gotta get the specific policy on that, but yes.
But there is also a master, parks master plan that has more detail.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
Is this similar to what else, to other counties?
That is correct, Commissioner Roth. There are open space, there are other areas, there are other jurisdictions that have this zoning district. So it's not like we're creating something that's never been done before, right?
All right. With that, any additional questions for staff? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation regarding this, or consider a motion. And Ms. Shank, this is for adoption or trans-
Recommend adoption.
Okay. So open for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County ordinance 2309 LDCT 2303 amending the land development code.
Very good. A motion and a second by Mr. Roth. Any discussion? All right, Chair's going to call the matter to vote. If you can, vote digitally, and if not, Chair's going to call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. So with that, we, on the agenda, I think we've changed up the agenda a little bit, but we have an opportunity for citizen comments regarding future agendas. So does anybody have any, anything that would be on a future agenda? And please, if we could focus on.
Chair, that's only if we don't finish in the morning. We don't do it twice.
Oh, we don't? Actually, we didn't do it the first time. No, ma'am, I. So Ms. Phelps, go ahead, please.
Hi, we appreciate that. Thank you very much, because this morning, I would have made it here earlier to hit the future agenda items thing, but unfortunately, the traffic was quite challenging. And as you know, I come from Maiaqua, which is, and I take 64. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to just, as far as future agenda items with our planning commission, that we've kind of put in the works. As Commissioner Roth has talked about, we do have citizens out there that are getting active and involved and are asking for some things. One of the things that I've talked to the Commissioners about was the establishment of a Citizens Advisory Committee for Rural Lands and Citizens. It's something that, as we've said, when it comes to development, dealing with the rural area is a little bit different than what we're dealing with in town in terms of the signage, in terms of our neighborhood meetings. A subject that came up with the Planning Task Force about the same time as our pot-bellied pig problem and the special permits for agritourism with over 1,000 attendees, was making the neighborhood meetings mandatory versus suggested. And I don't know what's happened with that. It's something that we started working on, oh, probably about the time of the FDAV move, when we went to meetings and we really didn't get the information that we needed to be an educated populace. And as I've said to the Commissioners, I'm sure it has to be a lot easier a job if we get up here and we have some background on what we're talking about to have an intelligent conversation. But as we're following things through the system, one of the things that we're told, and we appreciate getting direction, was to sign up for the neighborhood registry, and then you would get the project list, which is all the new applications for land use issues. Unfortunately, between the, in the last quarter of 2022, we did not get those project lists on a weekly basis for about four months, four months. So everything that is happening right now in our county, as far as items going up before the planning commission or before the Board of County Commissioners, has been outside of that process and procedure that we were told was the way we can learn and follow along with things. So also within that, we did get some changes made where the project list is now back up to date again. It's on the website. You don't have to, I'm constantly telling people to look on the website. And we'd like to see your support as appointees of our representatives to help us as you've suggested. One of those things is making neighborhood meetings mandatory, not just suggested. It's a good PR move. It's a good way to have an educated and amicable populace. We'd like your support for that, for the Citizens Advisory Committee for Rural Lands and Citizens, and again, to keep us educated and keep us on our toes, too. Thank you.
Also, again, I'd like to remind you that there is an opportunity to sign up for the public hearings where you get notices on the front page of the mymanatee.org. So if you sign up, you'll get every notice digitally, of course. So any hearing will be sent to you via email. All right. With that, is there any additional business? Okay, I think we've had enough here today, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting.